Oh, uh...
Oh, you kidding me? You love my stores?
Yeah, yeah.
I'm the person. Pass this down to the person.
I don't have my keys. Yeah, I could do it. I don't have a computer. I don't have my keys, I have to upstairs.
Like your style. Like your style.
Good evening and welcome to the Lawrence City Council meeting. Today is Tuesday, February 6th, 2018. Mr. Clerk, roll call please.
Counsel Reyes.
Present.
Counsel Levy.
Present.
Counsel LaPlante.
Senior.
Counsel Rabdo.
Present.
Counsel Peano.
Present.
Counsel Dela Cruz.
Present.
Counsel DePena.
Present.
Vice President Rodriguez.
Present.
And President Vasquez.
Present. Now, please join me for a moment of silence. Thank you. Now, please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Counselors, can I please get a motion to approve the minutes from January 16th, 2018?
So move. Second?
Motion has been made and properly second. Is there any discussion? Saying there's none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Moving on. Public participation. Please remember that you will have two and a half minutes to speak. When you hear the first bell, that means that you've spoken for two minutes. By the time you hear the second bell, your time is up. Please address the city council as a whole and not any individual city counselors. State your name and address for the record. First person, Mr. H. Malley.
Good evening, honorable members. We, the citizens, demand from this council and Mayor Rivera to support our police department and the seniors officer union. We are grateful to Honorable Chief Vas for the hard work they do. Mayor Rivera now must sign our police officers' contract. We demand of Mayor Rivera and this council support our hard-working DPW workers and their union. Lawrence Public School under the leadership of Honorable Commissioner Raleigh has been the best public school in the nation. But remember, our teachers' union need contract. Mayor Rivera tell Frank McLafflin from Lawrence Teacher Union with a budget of $200 million, they don't have enough money to provide teachers' contract. Remember your campaign promise: Save Lawrence, prosper Lawrence. Only possible you support our police officers and their union, our DPW and our firefighters. Work hard to get contract for our police officers' union. Remember our teachers' union, they need contract. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Malley. Next person, Francis Tineo.
Buenas noches, mi nombre es Francis Tineo. Vivo en 44 de la Monmouth Street.
My name is Francis Otra.
Tineo.
Tineo.
Tineo. En 44 de la Monmouth Street.
He lives at 44 Monmouth Street?
Yo vengo a rectificar el 18 de diciembre. Vine denunciando la grúa de Bali que tiene un trono mío de hace cuatro meses en forma secuestrado, en forma ilegal. Cuando me pasó eso, yo fui a la policía, hablé con la abogada de la ciudad, me le queje. Vine aquí al concilio y veo en los periódicos que esa compañía ya están haciendo investigada.
I'm here to testify in regards to a vehicle that was towed by Valley Towing back on December 18th. He believes that his car is being held illegally and he would like to speak to you folks about that.
Cuando yo fui a sacar mi camión, ellos se negaron a entregármelo. Entonces yo le entregué la llave del día 24 de septiembre hasta la fecha. Tiene camión mío secuestrado, la compañía de Bali, la que está en Meri Madre me tuve.
They have the vehicle and they have not released it as of yet. They made him give them the keys.
Yo tengo mi abogada que ya está dando los procesos y quiero que cuando vengan cualquier ciudadano aquí a denunciar algo, que ustedes como sea la capitula, investiguen si me da o mentira lo que están hablando porque en el caso mío se está justificando porque tiene cinco demandas de gente de investigue y más lo que van a hacer conmigo porque mi camión es mi negocio y lo tienen una forma irregular como secuestrarlo, lo encuentro yo.
He would like that you folks pay special attention to all of the people coming forward in regards to their claims with Valley Towing. This vehicle that was towed was actually a business vehicle and he's still not able to get it back.
Digo esto porque la grúa no puede estar por encima de la justicia y por encima de la ciudad. O sea que yo hago según la forma como de dictadora porque no puede estar por encima de la corte ni por encima de la ciudad. Si la corte no me prohíbe mi camión, cosa que va fuera, ni la policía, ni la ciudad, yo creo que yo no puedo tener un camión retenido por cuatro meses como si fuera secuestrado.
He feels that they do not fall under the justice system, that they do their own laws, that they are dictators and they pick and choose what they want to do with the vehicles from Lawrence. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tineo. Next person is Frankie Robinson.
Good evening. I'm trying to figure out...
Your name and address for the record, please.
What's that?
Name and address for the record, please.
Frankie Robinson, Bennington Street, Lawrence. My address isn't important right now. I'm trying to figure out the noise ordinance.
I don't need your address for the record.
36 Bennington Street.
Thank you, Mr. Robinson.
I'm trying to figure out about the noise ordinance. Why isn't this being enforced? You know, the noise that goes on around here doesn't even make any sense. I'm in my house, I gotta close my windows because I can't hear my TV because people are blasting music like they're going crazy. You want to play your music, play your music, but at a certain time, why don't you turn that down? The police, where are the police? You wonder why there's so many murders in the city? There's no police presence nowhere. You can go outside, you don't see the police nowhere. They don't be parked nowhere, they don't be sitting nowhere. That don't even make any sense at all. How do you not see the police nowhere? You go Methuen, you see them all over the place. People are running stop signs. Myrtle and Bennington Street, they run that like it's not even there. And there's like two stop signs on each side of the corner. So that's showing you right there that nobody's not even paying attention to nothing. By the schools, people running stop signs over there, coming up one-way streets, loitering, sitting in front of stores and everything. Women have to walk out in the street because they don't want to walk between these guys that are sitting out there on the sidewalk. So who's enforcing loitering? Is that even a law anymore? Who's writing tickets? People parked right on the corner, you can't even get by. The little ticket car, whatever it is, I never see that car, nowhere. Like I don't see the police nowhere with the noise, everything. If you got a noise ordinance, enforce it. Why don't you enforce that? You call the police, when do they get to your house? Let me tell you something. I just got out of Middleton doing two years for shooting at my neighbor behind noise and all kinds of crazy stuff. But this is the things that set people off. Then you wonder why people do what they do. They gotta take the law into their own hands because the law is nowhere around to do what they need to do. And that's ridiculous. This town has no business with all the drama that it has going on. No business at all. But hey, if you don't got no police around, people gonna do what they want to do. Sometimes you need the devil to go after the demon and I don't know what you people are doing. This city shouldn't even be acting the way it's acting. I'm all set.
Thank you, Mr. Robinson. Next person is Dick Russell.
Good evening, counselors. For those that don't know, my name's Dick Russell. I reside 34 Cross Street. I'll try to keep my comments short and sweet as I know the mayor will be delivering his state of the city speech tonight. My view on the state of the city is that streets are full of potholes. Next, the city should do something to amend the ludicrous winter even-odd parking ban. Quick question from all of yous. How many of you guys got driveways? I don't. I have no issues with the winter parking ban when needed, but if there's no snow on the roadways and the curbs are exposed, then why are we playing this foolish game? If there's plowable snow, then the parking ban goes into effect. When the roads are bare and 75% of the curbs are exposed, parking ban should cease. As a quick off-the-wall question, why can't people in my neighborhood use the General Donovan parking lot for nighttime parking? Start charging a fee for permits to park there and finally make some money off the property for the city. Now, whether I'm gavelled out of order for my next comments remain to be seen. Freedom of speech. In January, there were five neighborhood meetings, association meetings. I, as a loser in the at-large race in November, attended two of them. I, as a rule, do not attend the District A meeting. And because of the above-mentioned winter parking ban, I didn't attend South Lawrence West. I didn't get a chance to attend the Tower Hill meeting because of the Lawrence Licensing Board meeting where new rules were instituted regarding last call in Lawrence's adult entertainment centers. At the two meetings I did attend and the three meetings my spies attended, we all noticed something missing: the council is at large. I figured with the influx of new public safety-oriented counselors, some might show up at the licensing board meeting. Boy, was I wrong on that. So my question to the three counselors at large, what does a loser or why does a loser in last November's at-large race show more concern on what's going on in this city than those of you that get paid 15,000 bucks a year? Any answers? With that, I thank you for the time.
I am now submitting these names for the record. Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Moving on, public hearings, there's none. Counselors, can I please get a motion to take document 2518 out of order?
Second?
Motion has been made and properly second. Any discussion? Saying there's none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Document 2518 is the state of the city address per City Charter Section 4.7, based on the agenda by Mayor Dan Rivera. Mayor Rivera, good evening.
Good evening, Council President, city counselors, elected officials, and federal Laurentians. Tonight, I will report to you on the state of our city. We all have just spent the last year making our case to voters, stakeholders, unions, really anybody who would listen. We asked them for their vote and told them why and explained to them why we should be re-elected or elected, as the case may be. But after a year of campaigning, the people chose us. And now we, together, must lead and we, together, must make Lawrence better. So tonight, I'd like to frame my message to you by quoting an old Chinese curse: May you live in interesting times. Presumably, this curse is a bad curse for you because during interesting times, everything in your life is very difficult and hard. Ladies and gentlemen, I'm happy to report to you that the state of our city is strong, but we are living in interesting times. In Washington, the federal government struggles to keep its doors open. There's an investigation into our president's conduct and partnanship and division is the norm. On Beacon Hill, we have a hard-working state delegation fighting for us every day, but there are budget problems, transportation issues. The State Insurance Commission almost kicked all of us off our healthcare plan and to top it off, it's a state election year. Last year in the city of Brockton, they laid off over 190 teachers. This week in Everett, they're discussing laying off 50 teachers and about 50 employees to the school department. In cities across the country, women and men are marching, taking to the streets to protest for women's rights against the negative treatment of immigrants and the negative treatment of black men by police officers. And every year, the federal and state governments get pushed to do less and less for individuals, for communities, and for businesses. They do this by not raising the taxes at those levels and cutting back huge parts of the tax base to benefit a few. Even the financial markets, just today and yesterday, have made everyone concerned about the future of our economy. Times are truly interesting. And for communities like ours, let's just hope they don't get any more interesting. The good news for us is that while we remain a community that is not as affluent as many that surround us, we have made tremendous strides in building fiscal stability in order to weather these storms and to reduce the impact of these interesting times. In July of 2017, we passed the seventh balanced municipal budget on time. That budget was also the sixth in a row passed without borrowing money to balance it. These budgets all have in common the theme of conservative revenue estimates and tight, bare-bones spending plans. At least in my time as mayor, we have also been frugal throughout the year and implemented policies like spending freezes to ensure day-to-day operations in each department keep within their budgets. As recently as 2011, the city was only collecting 93.6% of its taxes. Now, you may think that sounds pretty good, but that left over $3 million on the table uncollected. This last year, the percentage collected by us was 98.5%, decreasing the amount left on the table to 1.5 million. And yes, we know that's not good enough and we'll continue to reduce that number. The city also used to suffer from the inability to collect past year's taxes from people who had just refused to pay their taxes or had continued to carry large sums of unpaid. Now, we've changed that in the past last four years and we collected more back taxes in those last four years than the previous nine years combined. That's to the tune of 8,710,000 back taxes that had gone uncollected. All this has led to our city closing this fiscal year in the black and with a historic high of $14 million in cash reserves. I always get taken the opportunity to remind folks that free cash is neither free nor is it actually cash, cash that we can use for ongoing expenses. So we can't use this 14 million to pay for police salaries or teacher salaries or overhead. Just think of it this way: if it's an expense that we can expect to have year over year, that money can't be used for it. The state won't allow us. We can and do plan to use it for one-time investments and for one-time emergencies around staffing, litigation, or natural disasters. Plus, the people who let us borrow money like to see that we have a reserve on the side. And today, we were on the telephone with Moody's and Standard and Poor's explaining to them why they should increase our credit rating and the fact that we have had two years of double-digit million-dollar reserves was of interest to them and hopefully, we made a case for them to lift and raise our interest rate. Our administration has been able to build this financial stability through the work of Mark Iannello, our CFO, and his staff, along with the wise counsel of the state overseer, the support and leadership of this city council, and the taxpayers of this community. As I look to report to you about the state of public safety in our city, I want to tell you it's really a tale of a city in transition. And while some crimes have broken records for being too high, it is without a doubt that others have broken records for how low they are. The homicides driven primarily by the violence of the opioid epidemic and domestic violence must and will be dealt with. The other crime categories that have broken records in a positive way must be talked about as well, like a 7% reduction in overall felony one, Part I felony crimes. That includes 24% reduction in robbery, a 30% reduction in residential burglaries, which is the lowest since 1999, along with a 30% reduction in motor vehicle thefts, the lowest since 2008. The Lawrence Police were able to maintain these rates while responding to 65,912 calls for service, 18,874 motor vehicle stops, and 2,355 arrests. You may not see them on the streets, but they sure are working. And we're trying to bridge the gap of the number of police officers on the street by hiring more police officers. We have seven graduating for the academy in a couple weeks and we have nine going to the academy in the spring. That should all go to lifting the profile of our department and getting the work done faster. Just to go back to the calls for service, I said there were 65,912 calls for service. That's more calls for service than Lowell got last year. And I don't need to tell you Lowell's got more people, more land than we do. So trust me, I know that we are not considered making gains in public safety until people actually feel safe. That is our goal. And as you know, we have a change in leadership in the police department and I'm in the process of putting together a search committee for a permanent chief. You should know that the process will be open and transparent and will yield us a great chief. You will play an important role in that process. In education, it's important to report on a few developments of note. It's been a busy day in education in Lawrence today. First, the trend of making Lawrence Public School System focused on teaching and learning of our children, increasing the graduation rates and decreasing the dropout rate continues every day. However, it's important for you to know that in November, Jeff Riley announced that he would be leaving his position as both superintendent and receiver of the Lawrence Public School System this summer. And while the progress of our city schools was the result of many teachers, parents, staff, and students, Jeff's leadership in keeping us focused and on task cannot and should not be understated. I'd like to take this time to thank him for his service to our children and he will be missed at this level. But as well as some of you may know, that last week, the Board of Education tapped Jeff to be the next commissioner of elementary and secondary education for the Commonwealth. They chose him for many reasons, but his work here in Lawrence was mentioned by each member after they talked about who they wanted to choose. They talked about his work here in Lawrence. And we should be happy for Jeff and proud because in this instance, Jeff's success is Lawrence's success. But we need not fear that our city schools' progress will backslide in Jeff's transition. The acting Dussey Commissioner has just chosen a group of people to take over the role of his receiver. They're calling it the Lawrence Alliance for Education. I'm excited about the composition. I was concerned about it, but today, when I heard about the composition, I got excited. The composition is high-quality. There are two current members of the school board on it. Half of the members live in Lawrence. I thought it was gonna be less than half. There's the leadership of a great education champion in John Connolly from Boston. This makes what could have been an outside, an outside-heavy body running our schools a more inclusive, local effort. You have my commitment that it's gonna be open and transparent and I think this will show that it will also have considerable local control. This is a far cry from the one-person receivership, let's be clear. Now, we have to get to work picking a new superintendent. The time is getting late for that and we have to settle the contracts with our teachers. I also have a pet project in this effort and that is to focus on getting a real CFO with accounting experience in our school system to open the books and report out the fiscal condition of our school department. The next step in our education's future is a big win for local control, but reminds us all that there is much to do to keep the progress going. In economic development news, the city continues to draw private investment as we grow our economic base. Over the next two years, the city will see over 1,000 units of housing come online. This is especially important as we work towards alleviating the housing crunch in our city that has caused a rent crisis. The mill conversions represent seven large mill buildings being developed and it's not all. The story of housing, the story of empty mills in Lawrence is no longer true. The story of our mills today is one of vibrancy, job creation, loft spaces, and creativity. We have not forgotten our neighborhoods. They are experiencing new life with hundreds of units being brought back online by local developers. Thanks to the work of the Distressed Property Task Force that meets weekly, the pace of transforming abandoned and dilapidated buildings to quality housing is going faster than ever. This process has helped us stabilize neighborhoods. On the commercial side, we've seen continued growth this past year in jobs and in space being leased. My office has helped at least two businesses receive state tax credits. One employed 143 people and is now in the process of hiring another 50. And a second will be adding 30 to 40 jobs in our industrial park. Another story that has changed about Lawrence, our industrial park. It is at the highest level occupancy has been in recent history. One of the managers told me that we're running out of space to lease. That's how good it is at the industrial park. But it's also signaling the interest from the outside world on the existing space in Lawrence. We know that we must set the stage for development here in Lawrence. Development does not happen on its own. We continue to work on commercial sites to prep them for development. For example, this past year, we received $550,000 from the EPA to help clean up the Tomirello site on Marston Street. And within two years, I believe this site will be positioned to finally be developed and bring some revenue into the city. Finally, in short order, we will begin to see work at the cinema site over near Colonial Heights. This is gonna bring a state-of-the-art animal hospital to our community and we'll even have Lawrence's first Starbucks. Now, this isn't about having a Starbucks. This is about an idea we all know is true, that you can have high-end retail here which will employ good, hard-working immigrant workforce from Lawrence and you can have it succeed. And I think Starbucks is gonna show that to be the case. All this conversation about the job creation and commercial use doesn't even take to account the over 4,000 jobs that were created and continue to be housed over at Salapoli's Riverwalk. It is clear that Lawrence is working and that commercial space is moving in our city. When we think about all the work that our DPW department does, I want you to know that we are well-staffed to meet the needs of our constituents. We're better off today than like no other time in recent history. I'm not talking about the days when there was 150 people in DPW. I'm not sure we'll ever be back at those days. But today, like no other day in recent history, we're gonna spend a million dollars to fix sidewalks across our community. This summer, we're gonna spend half a million dollars to remove those problem trees that we get calls about and fix the ones that can be fixed. And we're also gonna continue to pave streets like we do every year. But a special project of ours, and I'm really excited about, is that this year, we will make a million-dollar investment in fixing our city's basketball courts. I don't know if you remember, our first year in office, we spent $710,000 to fix all the baseball fields in our community. We'd be happy to know that we kept them up. Every year, the DPW spends time, money, and energy to ensure that we winterize the field and we fix them, make sure that they're ready for the spring. So all that money has not gone for naught. I think that a small expansion to those fields will show that we're still quality baseball fields across the city. Some of them, we put in brand-new dugouts. We did that at Mount Vernon as well as the Hayden Schofield. But that work that we did on the fields, we hope to replicate with the basketball courts because we know our kids spend a lot of time on those courts. All this work, the baseball, the basketball courts, the work at the South Common, all this is to improve our infrastructure and our public spaces. And just so you know, we haven't forgotten the basics. We're also focused on trash and I will be working with you to deal with this matter head-on as we go out to bid for the new trash holler contract this year. I'm gonna need your input and I'm gonna need your leadership on it. In all, we're in a great place where DPW is well-equipped and staffed to deal with all the way we throw at them. And boy, do we throw stuff at them. I want to draw your attention to the PowerPoint presentation you have in front of you. The presentation is a one that was put together by the department heads and I and it gives more detail about each department's activities, the activities they've done over the last year. In it, you'll see the new dance floor that we installed over at the senior center, the new AC and heating unit we installed at the library, the progress that we made maintaining our cemetery, the hard work of our fire department and recreation departments. Please go through it. Not only did it take them a long time to put it together, but this is a document, and you can feel free to ask these guys questions or give them praise as you go through it. I know I was surprised to see some of the stuff that we did and that the staff has done. But go through it because the presentation reflects the everyday work of making Lawrence better. better. But more importantly, it shows the pride the staff takes in accomplishing that work. So I tried to be short because we were with each other just briefly at, uh, the inauguration where I told you a little bit about what we look forward to, um, focusing in the next four years. So I'd like to close by reiterating that while the world around us is a sea of tumultuous waves with unprecedented events, the state of our city is strong despite all you hear. We're well-placed to fend off financial threats, external threats, and internal problems. It is only us that can weaken our position, you and I. If we don't make the hard decisions now, if we do not make the needed investments, we will weaken our position. You can guarantee it. But like the voters this past November, I have faith and confidence in us to get it right and to stay the course. Together, we will maintain our city's strength. I am sure of it, and we will make Lawrence better. So thank you, God bless you, and God bless the city of Lawrence.
Thank you very much, ma- thank you very much, Mayor Rivera, for giving us valuable information about the state of the city. We greatly appreciate this opportunity to learn more, and thank you for the PowerPoint presentation. You will be very helpful, uh, for us to review later on. Going back to the top of the agenda, we have document. Going back to the top of the agenda, we have document twenty-four eighteen. It's a presentation by Noemi Custodia Alora, who is the Vice President of Northern Access Community College Lawrence Campus and Community Relations. I just wanted to point out that, uh, the city council invited Vice President Laura to give a presentation about the, the success of the program that she currently runs at Northern Access tonight. She will be presenting us, uh, some valuable information, and I hope that all of us are able to learn from this. Uh, Northern Access is doing a terrific job here in the city, uh, so whenever you are ready, we are ready for you.
Yeah? Okay. Let's see. Hmm. What's coming? Huh? It doesn't seem to be working. Hmm. Oops. Unless it's something else.
No. Not sure.
Yeah, you know what? I will go. You guys have the slides, so then it's okay. You guys have the slides, so it's okay then, sorry. This didn't work out.
Councilors, we all received a PowerPoint presentation printed out by President Noemi Custodia. She will instead, uh, do it verbally. Uh, unfortunately, we're having some technical difficulties with the PowerPoint today. We will, um, go ahead and move on with the PowerPoint now. Good evening.
Good evening, uh, everybody. Thank you for inviting me. Um, my name is Dr. Noemi Custodia Alora, and the Vice President of the Lawrence Campus and Community Relations. And today I came to present the work that we have been doing at Northern Access for the last few years. So first, the first slide is, I'm sorry. The first slide is overview of, um, the college itself. So we have more than sixty programs. We have two campuses, one in the Lawrence, in the city of Lawrence, and the other one is in the city of Haverhill. We have about six thousand students, and we are pretty much broken down equally, uh, three thousand students in Lawrence and three thousand students in Haverhill. Um, and I wanted to talk a little bit more about the Lawrence Campus because it's of particular interest. The Lawrence Campus started back in the early eighties, and when it started, classes were offered back at the public library. And after that, we acquired the Dimitri Building in nineteen ninety-one, and since then, the college has been growing, at least the Lawrence Campus has been growing, to the point that is the fastest-growing campus, uh, in terms of community college here in Massachusetts. We have about two thousand three hundred, two thousand four, uh, two thousand forty-three students in academic programs on this campus, and one thousand three hundred of those students are of Hispanic origin. Um, if you combine both the Lawrence Campus and the Haverhill Campus, one of the things that you will notice when we break it down by cities is that the majority of the students combined for both campuses are coming from the city of Lawrence. So we have that, more than thirty percent of the population of students are actually from the city. So for us, is, um, is of great impact, the, the work that we're doing here in the city because also has impact in enrollment, not only on the Lawrence Campus, but also on the Haverhill Campus. So one of the things that, um, the college did back in two thousand fourteen, and this came with the new president that came on board, and you probably know Dr. Lynn Glenn that has been very active here in the, in the city, he decided to develop a new position, and that position, it was, um, where he has elected the first Hispanic person to lead the Lawrence Campus and have a focus on community partnerships. So the work that you're gonna see next is all the work that I have been doing and leading that support not only the students in the Lawrence Campus, but also key in the community of Lawrence. So the next slide that you're gonna see looks like a honeycomb, and it's a combination of many of the activities that we have been doing, not only in the community, but also internationally. And we have been focusing our work primarily working with Dominican Republic because that's where we have the majority of the students, uh, that are in our campus that are coming from Dominican Republic. And things include, uh, community engage- engagement, validation of credit, study abroad, community university, we're gonna have the YFON series, international students, and all the different aspects of these tasks that we are performing, all of them, um, are linked to the core, which is build the NEC community and have more partnerships here with the city. So, uh, the work that we do in the Dominican Republic has three aspects. One of them is to increase opportunities for faculty exchange. At Northern Access, especially here in the Lawrence Campus, where we have that more than sixty-two percent of the students are Dominicans, what we have is, we probably have, uh, two faculty that are Hispanic. Most of the faculty have never been in Dominican Republic and have very little experience working in Hispanic countries. So one of the things that we have been doing is providing professional development for them to have a better understanding of the culture. We also, sorry, developing a student exchange program because we want students that are living here in the city to be able to go to Dominican Republic and have experience there and also learn about the culture. And the last thing that we wanna do is we wanna have a permanent presence in Dominican Republic, which, uh, will come with the idea of developing a community college there. Uh, in terms of partners, we have the Instituto Tecnológico Superior Comunitario de San Luis, which is the first community college in Dominican Republic and the only community college. We're also working with Universidad Autónoma de Santo Domingo. We're working with the Ministry of Education, Science, Technology, uh, Dominican Republic. We're also working with a equivalent of a charter school for STEM education because we also feel that the partnerships that we create are not only for students that are college-level, but also students that are a K-12 system. And a new partner is, uh, Unicaribe College, which is a fast-growing private college in Dominican Republic. And one of the things that we have seen here, working with some of our students, is some of our students are coming from that, uh, university. The next, uh, slide that you have is how we have been building partnership in Dominican Republic, and you're gonna see there the picture of President Glenn Glenn. And as far as you know, he's the first president, the first community college president that went to Dominican Republic, uh, to develop direct partnership with different institutions in Dominican Republic that will help not only the students that are here in Lawrence, but also those that are in Dominican Republic that eventually would like to migrate to the country. So as part of that, we're doing different activities to help, uh, the mobility of the different populations. And again, a new partner that we have working with us is Unicaribe College, which is interested in helping us develop the, uh, Northern Access Community College satellite campus in Dominican Republic. Um, the next slide that you have is the Dominican Leaders' Visit that we have back in two thousand sixteen, and this is a group, uh, the team that originally worked with us. We have people from Universidad Autónoma de Santo Domingo, uh, people from the Instituto Tecnológico Superior de San Luis, the first and only community college in Dominican Republic, and also, uh, representation from the province Monte Plata and the Senator Charlie Mariotti, who has been also working with us. In all of these cases, one of the things that we have been seeing is that they're also tied here with the community because here we have a lot of students, a lot of citizens that have been graduated from Universidad Autónoma de Santo Domingo or have credits from there, and also people that are from some of the regions from where the other institutes are located. Um, the next slide is a slide of the faculty that went to Dominican Republic for professional development. For the past, um, I would say like fifteen, twenty years, Northern Access have been focusing a lot in investing in programs, uh, especially, uh, focusing on professional development for faculty that are around diversity and inclusion. Um, and usually happen on campus, sometimes we, they go to conferences, but one of the ideas that came out through my area that we developed is to have an immersion program. And the idea is a faculty that, uh, are working primarily with the Hispanic population, that are interested to have, uh, a better understanding of the culture and be able to relate better to the students, go to Dominican Republic for a week, and during that week, they learn about the education system, the health system. We actually go to a jail there so they can see how that works, and we, they use sometimes public transportation, and those of you that have been in Dominican Republic knows how it is. But the idea is that when they come back, they come completely transformed, and that has been very beneficial for the students because they feel more engaged. So last year, we brought the first, actually, two thousand eighteen. So, two years ago, we brought the first group of faculty. We brought four. This past October, we brought all the four, and the results have been so great that we are thinking about expanding to also include staff. The idea is each year, we wanna bring four faculty mixed with staff to Dominican Republic to have that engagement experience. Other initiative that we're doing in Dominican Republic is sabbatical opportunities, and that is when faculty, they spend six months of a year in Dominican Republic doing a research project, and we're gonna have one faculty that will be doing that in September. Um, we also develop teaching opportunities for NEC alumni faculty. If there are any NEC student or faculty that would like to teach there for a year or two, we have the ways and means to help them with the process because we have the connection with the Ministry of Education in Dominican Republic. At the same time, one of the things that we're doing is helping, um, people that are interested in getting ready, pre-departed to the United States. So one of the things that I have learned while I was in Dominican Republic is that the educational system there and the support system there is very different from the system here. And a lot of the time, you have students and you have professionals that migrate from Dominican Republic here or maybe from other countries, and sometimes they don't even know what are the first steps for them to, uh, complete their education, to validate their degrees, to get jobs. So one of the things that we have been doing every time we go to Dominican Republic is we make those connections, and some of those people, by the time they get here, they're actually, uh, able to navigate the system better. And with, related to that, one of the things that, uh, goes with that, and then the next bullet, which is presence in the Dominican press, and you can see that the major newspapers have been running stories about Northern Access in Dominican Republic, is, uh, one of the reporters from Listin Diario, and they are, Listin Diario is the equivalent of the Boston Globe here, she was writing a story for us back in year two thousand sixteen. Her name is, um, her last name is Apolinar. And while she was writing the story, we, we, we started getting connected, and she, her name is Betania Apolinar, and she decided, she was already thinking about moving to the United States, and as you know, it's a long process. So we kept connected, and by the time she came to the United States and she moved here in Lawrence, we were able to help her to, uh, enroll in non-credit ESL. Her daughter is a NEC student, and her son is on our early college program. So we were able to help the whole family to get integrated with the education and the professional piece. And like that, we have other examples of people that we have been helping pre-departed, so by the time they get here, they can navigate the system a little bit better. Another big area now where, uh, for us is the early college, uh, program, and you can see that on the other slide. So Lawrence High School have a new early college program, uh, that is, you know, working well. The early college program, what it does is allow high school students to earn college credit while still in high school and count for both, for requirements for high school graduation and also requirement for college associate's degree. Um, back when I started, uh, working at, you know, as a, uh, Vice President of the College, two thousand fourteen, we have about twenty-something students that is, that were in the program. Right now, we have more than a hundred and thirty-six students that are working together to get their degree, and combined them, they are earning one thousand three hundred and eighty-seven credit just this year alone. So this is a good initiative that we see that, uh, it will help also the city, especially at times where they said that the, you know, this is one of the cities with the lowest, uh, attainment in education, especially with degrees. This is something that we know that's gonna have a great impact in the community. And we work closely with the high school, with the superintendent's office, and other groups to secure a five-year grant, so all these students are taking college credit for free. So this is something that is, is very essential, especially for students that are migrating from other countries and still need the support system from the city. Um, the next one is the first graduation that we have of high school students that was held on May thirty, two thousand seventeen. We only have about five students that graduated, but this year we hope to graduate more than thirty. So this is something that we feel very, uh, happy about that. Um, the next slide is the National Credential and Skills Institute, and this is initiative where we decided that, um, going back to people that are migrant, migrants that have college credits or degrees from other countries, and they do not know how to, uh, validate them in, in the United States. The process is a little bit cumbersome. Um, the information is usually in English, there's only one office in Boston, and it has to be done everything online. So if you come from another country and you have no idea where to start, that's something that will make it almost virtually impossible for people to do. So one of the things what we did was, we make arrangements for us to facilitate the process to people, and as part of that, one of the things that we do is we provide different orientations within, in different languages. So obviously, one of them is English, but we also do it in Spanish, French, Arabic, and Portuguese. So the idea is to help people with the process. As part of that, we have been validating more than, uh, three hundred, uh, degrees in the la- in the past few years, um, because this is something that goes through one of the initiatives of the White House. We were selected to be one of the group that presented this initiative, um, as one, uh, national model to follow because it's one of the steps that will help people to earn their credits and eventually join the workforce in careers that are associated with their degrees. So the idea is to have a better quality of life. So as such, from time to time, you will see that we're still having these open forums that are free at the city and help people with the process of that. Um, the last thing that I have here- As part of that, we have been validating more than 300 degrees in the past few years because this is something that goes through one of the initiatives of the White House. We were selected to be one of the group that presented this initiative as one national model to follow because it's one of the steps that will help people to earn their credits and eventually join the workforce in careers that are associated with their degrees. So the idea is to have a better quality of life. So as such, from time to time, you will see that we're still having these open forums that are free at the city and help people with the process of that. The last thing that I have here for slides of major projects that we have at the college is we created partnerships to offer bachelor's degree completion programs here in Lawrence. One of the things that we know even for our students that are here in the Lawrence campus, trying to go to the Haverhill campus, it's only fifteen minutes, but sometimes feels like you're going to the moon because if you don't have a car, if you work here, you have to take care of your kids and so forth, something is limiting how much you can do. So in the same way, it happens if you want to, if you finish your degree here, associate degree, you want to go to university, and you have to go to another town, look for transportation and so forth. Those are additional barriers that people have. So what we did was, we created partnership with three universities, Regis College, Cambridge College, and Lindon City College, so they will offer bachelor's degree completion programs right on Northern Essex. And as part of that, the other thing is that the students will get a discount rate. So not only they get a bachelor's degree, but the bachelor's degree is at a discount rate, which they will not get that if they would be going directly to those four-year schools right at their site. Last year, we graduated the first group of students. This year, we're expecting to graduate more. And combined between the three, we're able to offer more than nine different programs so students can graduate with bachelor's degree, and we're even thinking about the master degree level. So that's something that we hope to grow. And then the last thing that I want to mention is that we're also doing all kinds of different activities in the city. We are part of the International Book Fair, Semana Hispana, the Yphone Speaker Series is something that is run through my office, and we bring a lot of different people to present, and it's always open to the public. Sometimes we're doing Spanish, sometimes we're doing in English, and the idea is to help promote education and literacy and culture here in the city. We do the same thing in the Hispanic Heritage Month, and every once in a while, different groups come to us and ask us for support for different ideas. And if we see that they follow the mission and the vision of the college and promote education and promote literacy, we support them too. So that was the case of Sueños Basketball, which we support them to have their Torneo Copa Lawrence 2017 on our campus for free. So they were able to bring the students, and you can see it in the picture, that they were like different teams from different countries, and we hope to provide them with the same support again. And the last thing that I want to say, and it's on the last slide, is we moved our office. We now are on 420 Common Street. People that have visited my office in the city, they know that they don't need to make an appointment, they just come in and we always help them, and this is something that we're committed to always do. Anytime people need support with anything that is related to education, related to support the city in different ways, they're always welcome to come to our office. I don't know if you have any question? Thank you.
Thank you very much. We greatly appreciate the opportunity you have given us to listen to the programs that you're offering today at Northern Essex. Councillors, is there one question? Councilor Rodriguez?
I just want to say thank you for bringing this opportunity, giving me the chance to listen to you and listen to the programs that you're participating at the, at the community college here in Lawrence. And I have a few questions for you. You mentioned early college program. It's a partnership between the high school and the community college?
Yes, and also Cambridge College too.
Okay, how many of the students? How many of the Lawrence High School students are taking advantage of this program?
A hundred and fifty-three.
And does it, are those courses, courses are?
They're offered at Northern Essex.
And are they free of cost?
Yes, they're free of cost. For, for the program, any student that is in the program is a five-year grant, and all of the students that are in the program, they will be taking the courses for free. And in addition, we also have additional grants that we receive from the state from time to time, and we also provide additional support for the students to take additional free courses and also to pay for the textbooks because the textbooks can be expensive. And the last thing is, we also help the student to take courses on the Haverhill campus, not just here, because we wanted to expose them to both campuses too.
So, but that's have some type of limitation because of transportation, right?
We have that all taken care of, transportation, that's not an issue. So the students, they, the boss, bring them on campus and then pick them up.
Also, you mentioned that you have nine different bachelor's degrees that are being offered here in Lawrence?
Mm-hmm.
And how many of students from Lawrence are taking advantage right now?
All of them. All of them are from Lawrence. So, and that's something that is very special, so they're...
How many students?
We have about, what's about, actually, with Cambridge College, we have more than forty students.
Forty, wow.
Yes.
So those are kids that are going to stay in Lawrence, close to their families, and doesn't have to go out?
That's correct.
To, to get a bachelor's degree.
That's correct. And many of the degrees are in health, which is one of the programs in high-demand education, computers.
You mentioned that we have the National Credential and Skill Institute?
Yes.
It does some type of re-validation for your degree when you come, you come from another country or?
No, so, so that, that institute is created by the White House under Obama Initiative for New Immigrants, and it's still on. So as part of that, one of the things that they do is they look across the nation, examples of initiative that are helping professionals to earn their degrees, to validate their credits so they can be immersed in the workforce. And one of the things that they heard is about the project that we have been doing to help people to validate credit, so we were invited to present at this institute. But beyond that, right now, we have through my office the services, so anybody that wants to validate credit from any country, they come to our office, we give them orientation, we help them with the paperwork, and then after that, we give them a post-orientation once they get their documents validated to see what are the next steps that they want to take into their careers.
So basically, what you're saying is that Neco right now is, is, is kind of like a center from anybody that come from around, any countries around, they can come over and get information and resources?
That's correct.
And resources are available to kind of like, you know, keep on going with your...
Yes.
With your education?
Mm-hmm.
That's great, Council President.
Thank you, thank you.
And it's through my office, so all that is through my office, so that's something that is very important.
And last, and I just want to congratulate you again for all the hard work that you have done. And let me tell you something. Me personally, every time that I see you in the community, getting involved with the community, I'm seeing the community college from Lawrence, I don't see Naomi, I'm seeing the organization, the institution, and that's something that it was, it was their presence before, but not as strong as it is right now. And I just want to congratulate you because of that.
Thank you.
Councilor De La Cruz?
Hi Naomi. It was a pleasure for me this summer, in December, to pass by the college. It's a beautiful college, and they built a high school next to it. I think it's a great opportunity for a lot of people to understand that you're not only serving Dominican people, you're serving anybody who come from any other countries. But by Dominican being the largest number in this city, I think our students should take opportunity of visiting the college and getting orientation and getting involved. Then, it has been advertised, but I think it needs more, more advertisement.
Yes, and one of the things that we're doing is, we are now reaching out not just to the students, but their parents or families, because sometimes it's the awelah that tells you, you need to go back to school. So the idea is to promote in different ways because even the concept of community college doesn't exist in other countries. So even that alone, sometimes might be confusing to people, so, you know, explain that, how you can save money doing it that way, how you can go and build a pipeline. So those are the things that we need to take in consideration.
And the college not only has, is helping the Dominican kids in the Dominican Republic per se, and at the same time, is enhancing the community per se. That community used to be an abandoned community, and because, so the college being there is my community too. And because the college being there is like open eyes to people. And I see a lot of kids going to that school.
Councilor De La Cruz, Councilor Payano?
Thank you, Council President, and thank you, Dr. Costo de Alora, for, for being here. I want to echo my colleagues and thanking you for the great work that Northern Essex has been doing in engaging with the community. I think, you know, we're doing amazing work, and, you know, just to talk a little bit about the early career conversation that you have already discussed, but just want to make sure that my colleagues know that not only do we have 130 students that are attending, that are getting sort of credits through Northern Essex, there is around 270 more that are getting it from elsewhere, I think with Merrimack College. So altogether, I think the schools have 300 students that are taking advantage of a program that's very similar to this. And I think the amazing work that's being done now, as different than from five years ago, is that before you would have fifteen, twenty students that were involved in the process, but they did not, you know, they were kind of out on their own, you know, so there wasn't necessarily this support, if they're taking a class to Haverhill, that they're going to get transportation or even get, you know, coverage for, for their books. So I think, you know, everything that's going on is incredible. I think the next step is to, you know, perhaps get some of these students to leave high school with, with an associate, or very close to getting an associate.
So right now, in the way that the program has been set up, is by the time they graduate, they will have skipped one full year of college.
Which is great.
Yes.
So, so that's, that's great. I think, the question, so I have two questions for you. One is around, how many years does it take on average for a student to get their associates from Northern Essex?
That's a very tricky question, so I'm going to tell you the answer. Most students, they work, because students work, they tend to take only partial credit. So if a student were, were to be a full-time student, because now we have, so maybe we have two terms, and before we only have one, they should be able to finish in two years or less if they start with the basic, you know, English Form One and English Form Two from the beginning. But when you look at the students that we have, our population of students, many of them, they work because they have to support their families, they have to support their kids. So now, instead of taking fifteen credits a semester, they might be taking only six, they might be, you know, taking nine, and that prolongs the time that take the students to graduate. So because of that, the college have been trying new ways to deliver courses. In addition to having hybrid and online, they have competency-based education, which students, they actually can accelerate at a different rate if they apply themselves, or students can get credit for early, for prior learning. So we have ways in which somebody has been working as an accountant, for example, for fifteen years, they want to get a degree, they can actually come on campus, they help them with the portfolio, and they can get credits that way so they can accelerate. So that's, those are the, some of the things that we're working on. There is also the issue of developmental courses, and those are the courses that students have to take, English and the math, that are below college level. So it used to be, it was a very long process, starting at level one all the way to level seven, and a lot of that has been eliminated, have been compressed. So now students, even when they are in that area, they don't have to spend that much time, because we know that the longer the student is in the pipeline, the less likely that, you know, that they will complete, and that's something that we're trying to eliminate.
Thank you, doctor. I, I think in years past, and I haven't looked into it, how it's been the last couple of years, I know that there were people that I would speak to that would tell me that they were taking fundamental courses or even just learning, learning English courses for years before they got to actual substance. I think that, I, I've seen it changed a lot in the last couple of years, but at least, you know, I'm wondering, you know, at a, at a graduation rate, you know, out of the students that you graduate, what percentage has been at Northern Essex for two years and what percentage has taken them longer than that?
On average, most students, it takes them three and a half to four years to graduate because the students have to be part, most of them are part-time. In fact, like, yeah, most of our students are part-time students because of that.
Thank you. And my, my other question, at one point, you mentioned about faculty. How many of the, the faculty at Northern Essex is Latino?
Yes, not that many. And I was one of them, and then when I be given the ministry, there was one less. So we, we have maybe that are full-time, we have probably four or five. And it is not for lack of effort, and I can say that because I was an example of a faculty that when I was hired, I didn't even have that much teaching experience. I had limited teaching experience, but they felt that we, that we needed to increase the baseline, and I was able to demonstrate that, that I could do the work. Part of the problem is that they're not that, maybe now it's increasing, but in the old days, not that many minority students graduated with a master degree or PhD. And in my case, for example, I got my first job six months before I have my PhD, and I didn't even have to apply. They're so limited that, and you're in Boston, then why do you want to go, you know, elsewhere? It's a problem that a lot of community colleges have, and you cannot compete with the salaries either. You know, one thing is to have a salary for a community college versus a salary of a professor at a four-year school. So there's a lot of different factors that affect that. So in lieu of that, or, you know, as we still trying that, the other things that we're trying to do, and I don't know if you have met any of our ESL faculty that are very committed to our students that are Anglo, is to help them to better understand the culture. And the best way to do that is to completely immerse them in the culture. They come back completely transformed. One of the faculty that came on the first trip, she's going back to do her sabbatical there, and she's going to go to Tenares, and she just came back eating cassava, eating all this stuff, so she was, she was sold. And those are the things that we want to see because the students get engaged. We cannot forget the other faculty that we have there that are also very supportive of the students, and that's what we're trying to do.
Thank you, thank you. Councilor, since there's no further questions, is there a motion to withdraw documents 2418 and 2518? Some of them? Questions be made? Properly second, or else if you're, please say aye.
Aye.
Yeah, it's have it.
Council President?
Vice President, thank you very much for coming before us tonight. I greatly appreciate it.
Council President? I just want to say something before we finish. Naomi Costo de Alara, she was one of the members that was selected to be a part of the Lawrence Alliance for Education. Thank you.
Thank you for your service. Document 1618, resolution, Melanie Resto, Superintendent Cecilia Rohn, American Cemetery, Councilor La Plan.
Shouldn't the ordinance committee report that out?
Moving on. Councilor La Plan? Want to say a few words?
Pardon?
Want to say a few words? You came with a favorable recommendation.
Oh, good, very good, thank you. So I, um... As some of you may know, I'm heading to Italy here in a little bit, and like I did last year when I went to France, we thought it was important to take a moment during the trip to remember the Lawrence, in this case, boys who died last year in World War I at four cemeteries in France and one in Luxembourg. And in this trip coming up, and our trip to Italy, we'll be going to one cemetery. It's the Sicilian Rome American Cemetery, which we have members from our city residents who died from World War II in battle and that are buried there. There are actually eight individuals who are buried there, five who are on the walls of the missing, so a total of thirteen. This is a special trip. These trips are special because we, gives us an opportunity to remember our past and how we have a connection to them. And the liberties, the freedoms that we have today are because of the sacrifices that these individuals who were fallen have given their lives to. Fortunately for us, many survive, and unfortunately, the World War II guys are not, they're, they're leaving us fairly quickly because of their advanced age. But this is a special trip because it gives me as an opportunity, as a city councillor from our city, as a representative of you, to go there to remember. This, this resolution is a vehicle. It's a vehicle to say thank you to the superintendent that's there, because she is in charge of the care, the grounds, et cetera, of that place, and making sure that the cemetery where our boys' remains laid are kept, kept in number, in the A1 status. I want to take a moment to read their names. I think it's important, there is an old, as I said to the ordinance committee, there's an old Egyptian proverb that says, "To speak the name of the dead is to make them live again." And so I just want to take a moment to read their names here. Of the eight soldiers who were buried there include Private John Benjamin, Private Paul Bonjourne. Bonjourneau, Private Larry Conti, Sergeant Carmine Indeglia, Private First Class Louis Katz, Private Harry Lutske, Private Edward Maurice, Private First Class Albert Saler Bicious, and there are five who were never found, who are MIA, and they're on the walls of the missing. Tech Five Clayton Conover, Tech Sergeant John Gregory, Staff Sergeant Victor Lemieux, Private John Petralia, and Private First Class Severio Stanginelli. And one last thing, and I want to thank the members for their support for this. As you leave the city council meeting this evening, and you drive down Common Street, you will see a sign at the end of the Common, at the intersection of Common and Jackson Street. That sign is for Paul Bonjourneau. Paul Bonjourneau's parents came to the United States in 1907. Paul, before Pearl Harbor, decided to enlist in the United States Army. He served in two invasions, one in Tunisia, the second in Sicily. He wrote a letter to his parents, and the part of the letter says, "I took part of the invasion of your native land, ma'an pa'. I'm glad, though, that you went to America so I can be born there." He died 10 days after he wrote that letter to his mom and his dad. And that corner that we're going to pass by tonight, when this meeting is ended, is dedicated to the memory of Paul Bonjourneau. And we're going to be visiting his gravesite later this month. The last thing is I want to thank the disabled American veterans for their support, the local Queen City chapter, they are sponsoring the reef that I'm going to be laying at the walls of the Tablet of the Missing, and the St. Alphio Society for their generous contribution for the Lawrence flags, of which I'm going to be able to lay our flag at their cemetery, at their gravesites. So thank you very much for signing the resolution, and I hope I can do you all proud.
Thank you, Counselor LaPlante. Have a safe trip when you go, and please remember all of us when you're there. Next document is Document 3918, appropriation transfer, Office of Planning and Development, Mr. Chair from the Budget and Finance Committee. This is going down to Budget and Finance Committee. Document 1018, Office of the City Attorney, prior fiscal years on paid bills, Mr. Chair from the Budget and Finance Committee.
Oops, it's me. Paid it. Thank you very much, Mr. President, just give me a second to pull this up. The, um, this is number 10? This is the number 10, Mr. President? Thank you. So the Budget and Finance Committee sent without a recommendation this document item for the payment of unpaid bills from the prior fiscal year for $1,200, and to make that in the form of a motion, as a committee report.
A motion has been made as a committee report, or any questions?
Discussion.
Discussion.
The reason why we didn't send us a favorable recommendation is Mr. Boddy was, unfortunately, he was ill that evening, and was not able to make the meeting, and so we asked him if he wouldn't mind being present here. I'm sure it's a very brief explanation, but I will, to the counselor who had the questions that evening, I'll call Mr. Boddy forward, just to explain why we're paying a previous year, I'm sure counselors have questions on that. Through you, Mr. President.
Good evening, Attorney Boddy.
Good evening, Counselors. For the record, Charles Boddy, City Attorney. Counselors, I'm here this evening to present to you a request for permission to pay a prior year's bill. The bill in question is the bill for an arbitrator. Arbitrator's name is Theodore O'Brien. The bill amount is $1,200, and the bill dates back to 2016. It's actually quite old. You may ask why, I'm sure you will, you would, or do ask, why are we looking at a bill this old, and why am I here requesting that it be paid? The reason I'm here is because there was confusion. The confusion arose when the arbitrator, who was serving as arbitrator on three or four different cases with the City of Lawrence, had submitted a series of bills. We issued payment, and in particular, we issued payment for services for May 16th, 2016. The arbitrator took that bill and attributed it to a June bill, and turned to us and said, "You owe the May bill," even though we had paid everything else, and we kept saying, "No, we paid May." So this has gone on, this battle has gone on for two or three years, he's now threatened to sue us. But the reason for the confusion comes from the check stub that we sent to Mr. O'Brien, the arbitrator. The check makes reference to an invoice date of May 16th, 2016. And then when it says invoice number, it says "O'Brien, June, 2016." So the date of the invoice is the date of the service, May of 2016. But the invoice number, because we issued this check in June, was June of 2016. The arbitrator, when he received this, applied this payment, which was for May, to June, and then said, "We owed May, and we've been in a battle because of his confusion for two years," telling him he's been paid in full. And we had...
Did we ever send another check for the month of June?
We, no, we never sent June, because he never asked us for June. He sent the bill for June, we never issued the June payment. But then when he said we owed him money, for the past two years, he's been saying, "We owe money for May," and we look at our records, and we see that there's a payment for May. So it was the fact that he kept referring to a June bill, excuse me, he kept referring to the May bill, which we actually paid, saying that we owed it, and we kept disputing it. And it wasn't until we, after probably 20 back-and-forths with this particular gentleman, that we asked him to send us more documentation, and Susan in my office, who's serving as office manager, as well as the other functions, went through it and realized that because he attributed the June payment to May, the June bill never was paid. So it's been two years, it's work that the man actually performed, we have, he has billed us for maybe four different arbitrations, and we paid him for three out of the four. This one did not get paid, and so that's why we're here. It's an amount that's duly and justifiably owed, it's money that we do have available in our account to pay, but we can't pay it unless the council approves our request to make the payment.
Based on the information that I have before me, I only have one document, and the document is very simple in its wording, but there's one sentence in parentheses that reads, "Hearing scheduled for May 18th canceled on May 17th, 2016." Does that mean that the service was not provided, because the hearing schedule for that date was canceled?
It was canceled, but there is, what, arbitrations with AAA, the American Arbitration Association, if you cancel within the arbitrator's cancellation window, and you don't give notice, you're still obligated to make a payment. And the payment is split 50/50. So generally, sometimes, depending on somebody wanting to cancel it and not the other, it would be picked up wholly by one side or the other. But typically, if both parties cancel, then the, both parties split the bill. So if I can explain that, that maybe doesn't make sense initially, but let me explain it this way. You hire an arbitrator, you say you're going to do an arbitration on May 16th. You tell the, the arbitrator tells you the fees per hour, et cetera, et cetera, and then the arbitrator says, "My minimum fee is $1,200 or $2,400 for an arbitration." If you cancel and give me 48 hours' notice, so that I can book another arbitration, there's no fee. But after 48 hours, if you cancel it, you still have to pay me, because I can't now book another arbitration, and I'm losing money. So that's the way it works. And arbitrators' windows, some of them will do, most of them do 48 hours, some of them will do as little as 24 hours. But you have to cancel it in advance to give them an opportunity to hire, to be hired by someone else. And in the particular case of this, this was a cancellation where the fee was paid because we canceled within that cancellation window, instead of with enough time for him to rebook.
Counselors, have any questions? Counselor Payano.
First, Attorney, thank you very much for coming through. I think it makes perfect sense that we need to pay this. My concern was just understanding what the confusion was on how we could let this go for two years. But it seems like, you know, once we heard that he was going to sue us, that we asked for all that information, and I think that it's important to sort of do that due diligence beforehand, just so that something like this just doesn't stay for so long, and, you know, we sort of get a bad rep out there that we're not, you know, paying our bills.
I understand your comment. Let me tell you that we had requested from him a dozen times the information. We asked him many times to please send us all of the bills and all of the evidence of payment, and every time, he sent us the one bill that we paid, and said, "You haven't paid it." So I understand what you're saying, and I agree with what you're saying. What you're saying is absolutely correct, and it's the attitude that the city and the City Attorney's Office wants to have with outside vendors. Unfortunately, in this interest, incidence, we did do that. So you all.
Make a motion now. Counselor LaPlante?
I'd like to make a motion. Counselor President, if there's no more to debate, I'd like to make a motion that we approve this document.
Second.
Motion has been made, I'm properly second. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? The ayes have it.
Thank you, Counselors, for your consideration.
Next document is Document 1218, Mr. Chair from the Budget and Finance Committee.
Thank you very much, Counsel President. So the Budget and Finance Committee met to send to this council a favorable recommendation, this document which would move an appropriation transfer, moving money from the retained earnings to the Special Project Fund for the procurement of equipment and projects for the sum of $3,270,000, and make that in the form of a motion.
Second.
Motion has been made, I'm properly second, and the discussion, seeing there's none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Next document is Document 1418, Mr. Chair from the Budget and Finance Committee.
Budget and Finance Committee met on this document, which is an item to be a supplemental order regarding the application of a bond premium. This is sent up to the council as a favorable recommendation, and make that in the form of a motion.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I just have one question, Counsel President, I'm not sure if this requires a roll-call vote, and I'm going to ask through you, Mr. Ryanello, if that's a requirement.
I didn't hear the question.
I'm sorry, just, through you, Counsel President, does the supplemental order regarding the application of a bond premium, does that require a roll-call vote, or a simple vote?
It just requires a affirmative vote of the city council, doesn't require a public hearing, is all I know, so.
So we're good.
I don't think a roll-call vote's necessary.
Thank you. Thank you, Counsel President.
All right, next item on the agenda is...
Ordinance Committee.
Item 12517, Madam Chair for the Ordinance Committee.
Thank you, Counselor Vice President. Document 12517 is establish maximum motor vehicle speed citywide to 25 mile per hour, request to amend, Chapter 20.26, has been put on the agenda by Counselor President Vasquez, and Counselor Vice President Rodriguez come out with a favorable recommendation to order a public hearing, and I make that as a formal motion.
Second the motion.
Any discussion? Seeing there's none...
Question.
Just to order a public hearing.
Counselor Payano.
Just to order a public hearing.
Thank you.
Seeing there's none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Next document is Document 35217.
Is a handicap parking at 80 AM Street, it come out with a favorable recommendation to also order a public hearing, and I make that as a formal motion.
Motion has been made, I'm properly second, any discussion? Seeing there's none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Document 37517, Madam Chair.
Is no parking at Millbury Street from Haverhill Street to Magnolia Street, it come out with a favorable recommendation to order a public hearing, and I make that as a formal motion.
Second.
Motion has been made, I'm properly second, any discussion? Seeing there's none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Madam Chair, Document 38917.
Counselor President, I would like to take Document 389, 390, and 391, and 393, and table all the items, and make that as a formal motion.
As a block?
Yes, a block.
Second the motion, to take it as a block.
Motion has been made, I'm properly second, any discussion? Discussion, Counselor Abdi.
Thank you, Mr. President, thank you, Madam Chair, for your action this evening. Mr. President, I would ask, whichever way appropriate, that as part of this, I would like a request to go to the Police Department and the Public Works Department, once again, requesting and requiring their input for the next scheduled ordinance meeting. It's been done before, I would request the indulgence in this committee to ask it again. These have been, the ordinance committee's been waiting patiently, and now this council for their input.
Will you, do you want this to be referred to the ordinance committee once again, or do you want to keep it at the full council level?
Cancel.
I'd like to keep it at the discretion of the chair, I'd like to keep it here, please.
Okay. So with that information, the petitioner, the original sponsor has requested for us to table the document, we'll table, there's a motion on the floor?
Second.
The motion is to send correspondence?
Send correspondence and table the...
And table all the documents.
So no further discussion allowed, all those...
Are we sending correspondence to the DPW Director?
Counselor Rodriguez, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Rodriguez, it is duly noted. All those in favor to table, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it.
397.
Document 39717, Madam Chair.
Is a handicap parking at 207 Brook Street, it come out with a favorable recommendation to order a public hearing, and I make that as a formal motion.
Second the motion.
Motion has been made, I'm properly second, any discussion? Seeing there's none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Document 40117, Madam Chair.
Handicap parking at 92 Greenwood Street, and come out with a favorable recommendation to order a public hearing, and I make that as a formal motion.
Second with discussion.
Discussion, Counselor Rodriguez.
We're going to, I would like to request a quick research on this specific location, because I believe that I previously put it on the agenda, and it was approved, and the sign is already there. But before we just redraw the document, I would like to find out a little bit more about that location.
So what do you want to do with the document?
We can order a public hearing, and then we can proceed...
We're still going to be ordering a public hearing?
Let's keep in mind, if we were to order the public hearing, we'll have to pay for that, and currently, our budget is a bit tight.
Right.
No, but I mean, if we find out, we just need to withdraw, no?
So we'll...
At least we're going to make the motion, right?
Yeah. So the, oh, the motion is to order a public hearing, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Document 40217, Madam Chair.
Transit rental license, 23 Brook Street, has been put on the agenda by Rosa Sala, all the paper was in order, it come out with a favorable recommendation, and I make that as a formal motion.
Second.
Motion has been made, I'm properly second, any discussion? Seeing there's none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Next document is Document 40317, Madam Chair.
The handicap parking at 20 Mount Street, and it come out with a favorable recommendation to order a public hearing, and I make that as a formal motion.
Second.
Motion has been made, I'm properly second, any discussion? Seeing there's none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Next document is Document 40417, Madam Chair.
Stop sign intersection for Foster and Dover Street, it come out with a favorable recommendation to order a public hearing, and I make that as a formal motion.
Second.
Motion has been made, I'm properly second. Counselors, if you look at Document 22117, it's the same request, we do have, it's documented already tabled, and a traffic study has been ordered. My recommendation at this point is that since... My recommendation at this point is that since we already reviewed, ordered a traffic study, is that this one or the other one is withdrawn if it's okay with the author of the document, and we just keep one document on table.
Which one we want to withdraw?
So, withdraw this one since the other one's already tabled.
I think we can withdraw the 221 and just take out the table items. It makes more sense if we have this one present.
This one, okay.
So, the motion is to order a public hearing on the 404, and then we can take...
I second the motion.
Discussion.
Discussion, Counselor LaPlante.
Has the traffic study been released? Have we received a traffic study on that? We asked for one to be ordered. Did we get one?
We, Mr. Clerk, have we received a traffic study review?
Nurse, I reviewed the file, and the notice was sent to obtain a traffic study from Planning Department as usual course, and nothing was ever returned. There was no response. There was no response to the request. The current document... May I have a second? In the letter that was sent dated 7/14/17, is in your packet, there was a public hearing read, opened, and then tabled on July 11th on the document. So, there is further progress along on 221. So, it makes sense to keep that one open rather than re-advertize. The public hearing is still live.
Okay.
Just by way of information, if you want, I can again pursue the letter.
So, my recommendation, then, I'm not sure who made the motion, but my recommendation is to, because the public hearing has already been ordered, to save the city some money rather than republishing a new one, is actually to keep 221 active, right, and alive. And then the one that deals with 404, essentially withdrawing that to remove any confusion.
That would make sense. Plus, the time factor on 221, there's more time on it, and it would go longer, so to speak.
So, I'm not the author of the motion, but that's my recommendation.
Is there a motion?
To withdraw the document, 404.
Motion has been made.
Second.
And properly second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Document 406-17, Madam Chair.
Arlington terror to be approved as a public way. It come out with a favorable recommendation to order a public hearing, and I make that as a formal motion.
Motion has been made, Counselors, we, motion has been made and properly second. Counselors, we received information from the city attorney that there are some other steps that we'll need to follow. I will recommend that we table the document at this level until we receive all of the appropriate information from DPW department and our city engineer. Is there a motion to table?
Motion to table.
Second.
Motion has been made and properly second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Document 407-17, Madam Chair.
Since this is a similar document, so we should table 407 as well? Can I get a motion to table 407?
Second.
Motion has been made and properly second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Document 418, Madam Chair.
Transit rental license, 34 Sargent Street. It come out with favorable recommendation. All the paper were in order. I may make that as a formal motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing there's none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Mr. Chair from Budget and Finance, Document 398-17.
Thank you very much, Counsel President. I am going to recuse myself from this debate and this vote. Please count that my attendance on this will not be here. Mr. Clerk, thank you.
Mr. Vice Chair.
Thank you, Mr. President. As Vice Chair, I'd like to make a motion, rather, the Budget and Finance Committee voted to send to this city council by majority vote with a favorable recommendation, the amount of $16,000 for the purpose of the household hazardous waste days and promotional materials. This is, I would note, 12,000 less than what you have in the document number. So, again, the favorable recommendation by the committee was for $16,000 for the purpose of household hazardous waste days and promotional materials, and I submit this in the form of a motion.
Second.
Motion has been made and properly second. Any discussion?
Mr. President.
Counselor Abdu.
I would just ask this evening, I hope all of our members that were here on the last council recall the presentation by the Arlington Schoolchildren that came before us to discuss these, this initiative. And the video that we all saw, I believe it was last October, and I would just like to bring everyone's attention to that. That was on the last council, and hopefully, the new councils have had the opportunity as well.
I'll just press on to you.
Counselor Payano.
Yes, Counsel President. So, I think one of the reasons that the committee decided to go in that route is that it gives the opportunity for DPW to come again, to ask for those $12,000. One of the things that we were asking for was essentially, it's a grant that's been given to the Green Team within Lawrence Public Schools for several years, but there was no, essentially, we had no idea as far as like return on investment. We don't understand what they're planning for this year or how they are comparing it to what they did last year. So, I think that there were a few questions that were asked in that regard, and it gives DPW to come back at a future time with something written down as to what exactly this organization is working on.
Counselors, any further questions or comments?
Sure, sure, Counsel President.
Counsel Rodriguez.
We only approving $16,000 today. That was the recommendation.
That is correct.
The motion is to approve $16,000 and $12,000 to further notice, correct?
That's the motion on the floor. DPW Director, Mr. Hackes. Counselor, before the director speaks, Counselor De La Cruz.
Okay, if they, the grant was $28,000, why is the money being cut on 16?
Director Hackes.
I have, if I may, may I answer?
Yes, please.
Just for those that weren't at the committee meeting, the deliberation at the committee meeting, a member had a question regarding the $12,000 and made a motion to amend the item to deduct the $12,000 for purposes, I will let him address, but I just want to report out on behalf of the committee. That's why we had a member that had requested an amendment.
Director Hackes, when I was reviewing the documentation, it says that the funds for this grant program do not need to be spent in the fiscal year that they were awarded, but what impact would it have if we were to reduce the amount of the funds that have been granted to your department for recycling purposes?
Well, at this point, good evening, Counselors, Carlos Hackes, Director of Public Works. The $28,000 grant that the city Lawrence has been awarded, we have divvying up among differing target areas that the department wanted to focus on. The ones that have been approved by committee and sent to full council for recommendation approval were specifically to our supplies and other materials related to increase our recycling efforts in the city. The other portion, which is the $12,000 that was excluded from the motion, is so a future presentation compared to, made to the full council about the efforts of the Green Team at the Arlington School, what have they been doing, and to submit a report to council to get more information about how they plan to spend the money for the rest of the calendar year.
Thank you, Director. Given with my familiarity with the Green Team and the work that they have done, are we voting in opposition of the motion? Because I believe that we should approve the full amount rather than not accept the grants today. So, that's just my own take on it. Counselor De La Cruz?
Yes.
Counselor Payano.
The grant is only being for the Arlington School, the $26,000? Or are all the schools included in the Green Team?
No. So, the entire grant itself is about $28,000. It's called the Recycle Dividend Grants Program that the MassDP grants to cities and towns across the state to be able to, that they can use it to pursue recycling efforts. The advantage of this particular grant versus other grants, that it doesn't come tied to specific items or areas. As long as it's used to advance recycling efforts in the city, it is acceptable for MassDP to be able to use that grant. Now, the city in the past, through the department, has used this particular grant through different items. One of them that we have used in the past for is to fund a Green Team in the Lawrence Public School system, which act as our recycling ambassadors, one of them being funded right through the Arlington School that goes through a lot of different schools and different communities and different organizations to teach students and also parents about the recycling efforts in the city. That's one of the portions of the money that we want to use in the grant program. Some other monies that we want to be able to use it is to fund additional household hazardous waste efforts that we do in the city every year, and also to buy more supplies and marketing materials for recycling efforts in the city as well. That's a full, that's what the full grant would be used for.
Counselor Payano.
Thank you, Counsel President. So, in no way am I saying, I don't think in no way are we saying that we would not be given a grant to the Green Team of $12,000. I think one of the things that I asked for within the committee was that any time any organization is giving a grant to a different organization, there are several things that you ask for, and those are things that I didn't essentially see in front of me, which is essentially, you know, how many students is, how many students is this going to? What are these students doing, you know, on a monthly or quarterly basis? You know, how, things essentially that you can use to understand not just the value of the program, but the impact that it's causing outside of anecdotal evidence, right? So, a lot of organizations can give you a really great rapport, great video, and it might be all well and good, but one of the things that you need to look at is sort of like, how are they even teaching these students, right? Now, if this was just a one-year grant, then, you know, maybe I wouldn't think so much of it. But this is a grant that's, we've been given to the same organization for, I think the director said, over four years. So, I think, you know, moving forward, we should have an understanding on how this, you know, how they're using this $12,000. I think, you know, at the time, the director said that there might be 12 to 15 students that are within the program. You know, potentially, if they had an opportunity to kind of lay out on paper what it is that they're doing, what it is that they're planning for this year, this might grant the program director, whoever is in charge, a way to sort of expand their thinking, because now they think, oh, this, the grantor is actually asking for information and actually wants to know what we're doing outside of just doing this presentation. So, that's my thought, and I think, you know, it gives DPW another month or two or however long to come back to us with a better understanding what it is that Lawrence Public Schools is doing with this money. And at that point, we can then approve and have a hand on, and really know what's going on with this.
Counselors, seeing there's no further questions or comments, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Mr. Clerk, roll call, please. Only one person voted aye. Only one person voted no. That's what it sounds like.
No, I say no. I say no. I voted no.
Roll call, Mr. Clerk.
Yes or no?
Yes.
Counsel Reyes.
No.
Counsel Levy.
No.
Counsel LaPlante.
President.
I'm sorry. Are you voting president or absent? You're absent. I just want to make sure, for the record. Counsel Abdu.
No.
Counsel Payano.
So, my vote yes is...
To approve it at 12,000?
16,000.
At 16,000, excuse me. Counsel De La Cruz.
Approve the 16,000.
Yes or no?
Yes.
Counsel De Peña.
Yes.
Counsel Vice President Rodriguez.
Yes.
And Counsel President.
No. Motion fails. Counselors, is there a motion to approve the full amount of $28,000?
Motion to approve the 28,000?
Second.
Motion has been made and properly second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstain. Mr. Clerk, roll call, please.
Counsel Vice President Rodriguez.
Yes.
Counsel De Peña.
Present.
Present, marked. Counsel De La Cruz.
Yes.
Counsel Payano.
Present.
Noted. Counsel Abdu.
Yes.
Counsel LaPlante, also absent. Counsel Levy.
Abstain.
Abstain, marked. Counsel Reyes.
Yes.
And Counsel President.
Yes.
Five, yes?
Motion carries.
One abstain, two present, and one absent. Motion is approved.
Document 323-17, Mr. Chair from the Housing Committee.
Yes. Housing Committee met and discussed item 323. Give me one second from Counsel President, please. 323, which is the surplus declaration of 1416 Truman Court. It is a surplus declaration only. The Housing Committee voted in favor, voted in favor of this item, and I would like to make that as a form of a motion.
Second.
Motion has been made and properly second. Any discussion? Seeing there's none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Document 324-17, Mr. Chair.
Yes, it's the same situation. It's a surplus declaration of 118 May Street. We met and discussed the item, and we voted in favor of it, and I would like to make that as a form of a motion.
Second.
Motion has been made and properly second. Any discussion? Seeing there's none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Personnel Committee, Madam Chair from the Personnel Committee. Ms. De La Cruz.
Where are they?
Document 1818.
Sorry, my voice is gone. Okay, 1818, Appointment Zoning Board Appeals Richa Consoli to be reappointed. All in favor?
There's a motion on the floor.
The motion.
To approve.
Second.
Motion has been made and properly second. Any discussion?
Discussion.
Discussion.
This is on Mr. Consoli.
Counselor LaPlante, we received an email earlier today that Mr. Consoli unfortunately won't be able to be present due to a medical concern. If there's any questions, I know the Chief of Staff is here tonight, but he won't be present tonight due to a medical concern.
I would like, Mr. President, can you remind me of our rules with respect to timeframes? Is this one of those 30-day appointments? If we don't vote on it, it becomes a...
So, the zoning board of appeals, based on the information that I previously received, is not a, one of the boards that will go by the 30-day.
It does or does not?
It does not.
It's not?
No. The ordinance here is states...
It's actually charter.
So, the charter, the city charter says, specific to...
This one.
The mayor shall appoint at all city officers, department heads, directors, and members of multiple member bodies for whom no other method of appointment or selection is provided by the charter. Accepting only officers serving under the school committee, offices appointed by the Commonwealth, and persons serving under the city council. Except appointments to multiple member bodies, all such appointments made by the mayor unless otherwise provided shall be subject to review and confirmation by the city council as provided in Section 3.7. This one does not specify the 30-day provision.
So, our interpretation through the clerk, then, is that this is not, this is not binding of the 30 days, but it's only for department heads and other positions that the council has voting authority over?
As counsel to the city, I decline certainly to offer a legal opinion as to whether or not this applies. It does not appear to apply based upon the reading that I give it, but my opinion makes no difference.
Okay, thank you very much. So, so, the, what I have discovered in my time here in the city is that this board is an amazing, many of our boards have a lot of the powers and a lot of authority. The zoning board is, it has, really impacts our neighborhoods, special variances, special permits, a lot of different things. And the only time we actually have a chance to meet and actually have this kind of conversation in a public setting is a night like tonight. And so, I understand that Mr. Consoli is ill, and a lot of people are ill right now because there's this stuff going around. I get that. I, while I do respect Mr. Consoli, who used to be a colleague here... thank you. And I'm only going to say once.
We can speak to that. You know that I've confronted you about that situation, because I live on Jamaica Street, and I said to you, we did not approve that, that was not the project that was supposed to go up. And I said to you, please help me to find out how that got approved, because that was not the project. But I haven't heard from you.
I have a question.
I'm done, thank you very much, and thank you very much, Ms. Taveras, thank you.
Counselor Dela Cruz.
Yes, as Mr. LaPlante, I have a concern with the zoning department, because Josephine Street, they built three houses, not, four houses, now they have like six houses, no sidewalks, no parking space. That is concerning me a lot, with the zoning board not thinking about those, those things. Sidewalk, we have a lot of people walking in the community, no parking space, now the street is very small, and at the same time, it has two ways, two-way street. Then, I think all of those things, for people on zoning board, it need to really go by the place, see it, and see what is possible. Then, I don't have a question, I have a suggestion. Thank you, President.
Counselor Payano.
Thank you, and thank you, Ms. Taveras, for your willingness to be a public servant. I want to just echo my, my colleagues' concerns and add, not just that, I think one of the things that need to be taken into account is not just how this might affect parking, but how this might affect our school department, our fire department, our police department. I think we, we need to make sure that, that, that as a, as a body, that the zoning board is looking at sort of like that big picture, where, you know, if you approve three, oh, that's not going to affect the school so much, but if over the course of...
I first looked at 4.3 and then I went to 3.7. 4.3 just talks about the mayor appointing all city officers, department head directors, and members of multiple member bodies, of which this is one. Doesn't talk at all about accept appointments to multiple member bodies. All such appointments made by the mayor unless otherwise provided shall be subject to review and confirmation by the city councils provided in 3.7. Accept appointments to multiple member bodies, everything but these boards and commissions, is how I'm reading it. Shall be subject to review and confirmation. But then if you go to 3.7, it's very precise. Mayor shall submit to the city council unless otherwise provided the names of all person desires to appoint as a department head or a director of any city agency. And that's where I'm hanging my hat on. And then it goes on, and at the very end it says that the council has taken no action and these appointments shall become effective. I, you know, one of the common concerns that we have is with the charter, and every 10 years we have a charter review committee. And every 10 years we bang our head against the wall because we can look at this charter, we can find out, you know, this, there's seems to be conflicting and ambiguous language throughout, and it's very difficult. And it, what we do is it leaves too much to interpretation, and what may seem that makes sense on one page may be a conflict on the other. So I would like to see that. However, having said all that, just two quick points. One is I, if this was an individual who did not have a track record, I would probably be voting no tonight. I do not want to be gambling tonight and, and tabling something, even though, I don't want to make this a constitutional crisis by any stretch, or a charter crisis. So, you know, I, I'm probably going to end up supporting Mr. Consoli this evening. The comments that I'm going to have that I wish he was here to listen to or understand were this council will unfortunately be proposed to other nominees, but the same thing goes to Mr. Consoli. And this is our time for these members to hear a city councillor's position on things. And when they're not here, that means we're going to their meetings, and it changes, the dynamic changes. I mean, we're going to be voting for someone, but they don't, I have a very strong opinion about zoning requirements in the city. And I go to the zoning board, not as often as I, as I should, but every now and then. So I have an idea. My comments on Mr. Consoli are shared by many, and I think he does a great job, and I would never say anything that would besmirch his reputation. So having said all that, just because I'm going to be more cautious in this, I'm probably not going to make the motion to table, only because of the, the uncertainty of the language of our charter. And that's the only reason why, so I'm not going to do that. But you'll understand shortly what my concerns are regarding the zoning board. Thank you.
Okay. Councillors, any further questions or comments? Seeing there's none, all those in favor to approve, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Document 1918. Councillor De La Cruz.
Yes. Document 1918, appointing zoning board appears, Beatriz Tabarez.
Councillor De La Cruz, is there a motion?
It came with a favorable recommendation, and I put a motion.
Second.
Document 1918 without a recommendation.
Without?
Without.
Without a recommendation. Thank you, I'm learning.
Is there, is there a motion to accept as a committee report?
It is the motion to accept.
Committee, I second the motion.
Okay. So there's motion on the floor to accept as a committee report, and it's been properly seconded. Any discussion?
Discussion.
Councillor La Plant.
So I'll just take my opportunity now. This is what I would have said if Mr. Consoli was here. So, thank you, Ms. Tavares, for your patience. First of all, I am delighted that you've been rea-
Good evening.
I'm sorry?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening, thank you. It's my bad ear. Thank you so much for your willingness to serve. I, I happen to like your enthusiasm, I happen to like where you come from as a voting member of the ZBA. You take your job, through you, Mr. President, you take your job seriously, you ask the right questions, and as the time has moved on, your comfort level on the board has increased, and it is noticeable. My, I'm going to vote for you tonight. My concern is, is not with you specifically, or with any other candidates that are here tonight. My concern with the zoning board is when I go through my neighborhood on Jamaica Street and I see this monstrosity of a building that, that got approved somehow, and I'm thinking to myself, I know it's not you, how did that happen? What is going on? Every time we have, and we talk about this in these major build, mill facilities, the mayor talked about how many of these, more of these, these mill conversions, that we have housing units, and every time I think of that, I have a real concern with the numbers of people who are, are, population growth, which requires more services, more schools, more congestions, more parking, it goes on and on. But the zoning board unfortunately played a part in that. And the zoning board has, is continuing to play a part, and when you have a single property or a single unit or double unit, somebody comes to developer and says, I want to put three units on there. And sometimes they get the three units. And so we're nickel and we're diming, we're adding one here, one here, one here. Before you know it, we're starting to get real numbers, congestion goes up. Councillors who are new, council president, are going to get a bunch of phone calls regarding parking problems. And there will be evenings, council president, as you know, we'll be here till midnight talking about why we need a, we need sticker parking on this one street while these people are parking on the place that I'm supposed to park, and we start pulling our hair because all of a sudden, we can't create more parking. It is what it is. The parking is what the parking is. But we have so many more people with so many more needs, and then nobody wants to park three down, three blocks down, they want to park in front. I get it, we're all the same way. I, if I had a chance to park in front, I would too. That's my diatribe. My diatribe is not for you, but this is my opportunity to let council president through you, to let you know that I support, when you take that tough vote, when you have both a developer who says I can do this fantastic thing, shows you this beautiful image about the grass on the front, and how the, you have the parking on the side, and you've got these three, and, you know, all this, and all the nice things that are going there, and this lot has been empty for some time, and this is going to, this is going to be fantastic. I'm going to support, council president, I'm going to support those voting members, because I can't show up to every one of these voting things, every one of these times. But I'm going to support you when you say no. No to this new growth that we're looking at, because we're not being able to deal with the other side of it. Not that we don't like the folks, but we can't deal with it. So if Mr. Consoli was here tonight, I know it's not here, I wanted him to hear that from me. That's the position that I am in, that I'm concerned about our residents today, and that, and that we want to have our quality of life, and we want to travel down the street where you don't have bumper-to-bumper traffic at 2:00 in the afternoon, you can't cross a bridge because God knows, there's just too much traffic, and there's four light cycles, or there's snow plowing going on. Not much of a question, Mr. Tavares, I understand that, it's my opportunity to vent. But if you have a comment on it, I'm willing to listen, but that's what I wanted to say tonight, thank you. And I'm only going to say once.
You can speak to that. You know that I've confronted you about that situation, because I live on Jamaica Street. And I said to you, we did not approve that, that was not the project that was supposed to go up. And I said to you, please help me to find out how that got approved, because that was not the project. But I haven't heard from you.
I have a question.
I'm done, thank you very much, and thank you very much, Mr. Tavares, thank you.
Councillor De La Cruz.
Yes. As Mr. La Plant, I have a concern with the zoning department, because on Josephine Street, they built three houses, not, four houses, now they have like six houses. No sidewalks, no parking space. That is concerning me a lot, with the zoning board not thinking about those, those things. Sidewalk, we have a lot of people walking in the community, no parking space. Now the street is very small, and at the same time, it has two ways, two-way street. Then I think all of those things, for people on zoning board, it, it need to really go by the place, see it, and see what is possible. Then I don't have a question, I have a suggestion. Thank you, President.
Councillor Payano.
Thank you, and thank you, Ms. Tabarez, for your willingness to be a public servant. I want to just echo my, my colleagues' concerns and add, not just that, I think one of the things that need to be taken into account is not just how this might affect parking, but how this might affect our school department, our fire department, our police department. I think we, we need to make sure that, that, that as a, as a body, that the zoning board is looking at sort of like that big picture, where, you know, if you approve three, oh, that's not going to affect the school so much. But if over the course of two years, there's, you know, 50, 60 new units in a certain neighborhood, that might affect the service that we're providing in, whether schools or fire, that might affect it greatly. So I think one of the things that we need to ensure is that, when decisions that you guys are making, that you're, you're taking, that everyone in within that board is taking that into account. But I'll, I'll digress, and I want to thank you again for the service that you're doing.
Councillor De Peña.
I want to say only congratulations, because I know you for many years, and I know when you take it, any decision in this board, you take the best decision for the city. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Councillor Rodriguez.
Oh, sure. Beatriz, thank you so much for reapplying for this position. I just wanted to ask you a quick question. Is the Board of Appeal seeing every applications that goes to, like, that, any project that we have in the city of Lawrence? I don't think so.
If what?
If, if you guys on the board don't see necessarily every project that is going on in the, in the city of Lawrence, correct? Because if it is a buildable land that is more than what is required in terms of size, you guys don't see that.
Are you asking me if we visit the cases when we receive them? Because we get them earlier, is that what you're asking me? We visit the places?
No, I'm asking you if you guys see every case that is going to be built in the city of Lawrence. That's not the case, as far as I understand. You only, you guys only see the projects that are limited on spaces, and they need barriers, and, and, and stuff like that, right?
I only can understand the question, but this is what, so we get a, a packet, we get the addresses, and we get the, what they want to do, so we visit the places. Me personally, because I can't speak for anybody else, I take in consideration the butters when they come in front of us, and I take into consideration clutter. I don't, I, I wouldn't like to see houses built too close together because of fire, because of the fire, like you said, if there's a fire, the trucks can't get through, the school department, parking, sidewalks. Me personally, I take that into consideration. I don't know if that was the question. If that answers your question.
That's not a question, but that's fine. I ask the question to the next participant. Thank you so much.
Councillor Abdu.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll be brief, I just wanted to concur with what Council Payano had said and Council La Plant before him. As you take the votes, keep in mind the support systems that support every household, whether it be the schools, parking. And I would conclude by saying, I, I know you know these things, because as you know, I'm before you quite a bit, and I do appreciate the work you do, and the work of your colleagues on the zoning board. And so I will be, based on our experience together, I'll be supporting you wholeheartedly.
Thank you.
Council President, one last thing. Would it be appropriate for me to make a motion this evening, based on the comments that I heard that Mr. Tavares said, with respect to Jamaica Street, where there was a building that was placed on there that did not go before the zoning board for approval, but yet was certainly a, a place that was beyond the zoning requirements? Would it be okay for us to put that on the agenda so that we can be able to put, go through the council process? And if I did that tonight, could I do that in an official way? Would that be permissible?
What, what's the new document that you would like? What will be the new document?
A new document for new business at the next city council meeting.
What will be the title of the new document?
Title would be, review of the, do you remember the number? The, the recent Jamaica Street properties at the intersection of Jamaica and South Union Street.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Remember, we just approved the committee report. Is there a motion to approve the nomination of Beatriz Tabarez?
Second.
Motion has been made and properly seconded, any discussion? Seeing there's none, all those in favor to approve Beatriz Tabarez, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, good evening.
Next is document 2018. Councillor De La Cruz.
Document 2018, appointment Lawrence sanitary district, Brian De Peña. It came with, with a favorable recommendation.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
Second.
There's a motion to approve, it's been properly seconded, any discussion?
Mr. President.
Councillor Abdu.
I would like to ask if should be willing for the Chief of Staff to maybe present us with, I believe this to be an additional member than we're accustomed to having for the city? And if that could be expl- explained, I would note for the record, I was not at the Personnel Committee meeting two weeks ago. I apologize to my fellow colleagues about that, but we historically have had three. As chairman last year, we had approved a full complement of Mr. Quateroni, another gentleman. That's it? Yes, Mr. Connors, and our DPW Director.
Good evening, Chief of Staff.
Thank you, Council President. I'm happy to answer any questions, I'm not really clear what the question was.
So this is, I believe Councillor Abdu is asking if this is a new position that has been given to the city of Lawrence to be, to serve in the Lawrence sanitary district, if I'm not mistaken?
Yes, yeah, so I apologize, yeah, thank you, yeah, I just, unlike many of our positions, like we just talked about the zoning board, that flow through our charter or our city ordinances, the GLSD Board, the Greater Lawrence Sanitary District Board, is statutory, it's under Mass General Law, Chapter 750. And so Mass General Law, Chapter 750, has specific language in it, that when the population of the city of Lawrence reaches 80,000, we automatically get a new seat on that board. And our federal census numbers have reached 80,000 people, so it's appropriate at this time to appoint the fourth member. So this member would not be replacing anyone, he would be a fourth member on the board. Is that?
Mr. President, and so are we, is this position, is it a, if you will, a discretionary volunteer, or are we making this coupled with the position that Mr. Peña presently holds?
This is a three-year position, and we would be putting Mr. Peña there as our water commissioner. We have assigned one of our seats to our DPW Director, as have the other communities in the GLSD. Our DPW Director does not live in Lawrence, he lives in Methuen, disclosure. Ironically, the Andover, DPW Director serves for their community, he does not live in Andover, but he serves for Andover. The Methuen DPW Director does not live in Methuen, but he serves for Methuen. So it's not been an issue with the other communities. We would be appointing our water commissioner as this fourth seat, because it is such a specialized amount of knowledge, that we really, running a sanitary plant makes so much sense. Our water commissioner has the most knowledge on that. If you recall, prior to his leaving and going to Tuxbury, and prior to our filling the DPW Director Chair seat, Mr. Peña actually served temporarily as our DPW Director here in the city of Lawrence, and filled that GLSD role for us at that time, and did an excellent job. And it really makes a lot of sense to put him back there at this time, where we have the seat, and we have a candidate that's the most knowledgeable employee that we have to add him to that board.
Thank you, Madam Chief, thank you, Mr. President.
Councillor La Plant.
Just help me understand, statutorily, through you, Mr. President, we have three seats or four seats? And is the fourth one new? Do we increase our, our membership base?
Statutorily, we had three seats. The statute reads, the city of Lawrence shall appoint one additional member when its population is recorded at 80,000 persons. So we have reached that threshold.
Thank you.
So now statutorily, we have that fourth seat, which we just, our federal census numbers just came in at the 80,000, so now it's appropriate for us to-
Thank you. I should have understood the first time you said that, so thank you.
No, that's okay, no, but it is confusing, that's why we wanted to clarify.
Well, and while Mr. Peña is here, so happy to see you as a candidate, and clearly a gentleman who's got tremendous experience, so my pleasure to vote for you this evening. So thank you for being a part of this.
Thank you. Councillor De La Cruz.
I would like to say, Mr. Peña, that I've been seeing you working on a daily basis, and I see how you treat the customer when they come to the office, and your employees around you, they smile. I think that's very important when we get anybody to be part of any department, the relationship that you create with your employees, immediate employees, and at the same time, with the people that come daily to your office. And I have seen a lot of people from the communities leaving the office very satisfied, because their problem has been solved. Then I would like to say thank you, because that's what our people need, that when they go to any department, that they get the support that they need. Because sometimes they don't speak the language, but they speak French, and it's still, my Haitian friends are understanding the language. Then I would like to say thank you for accepting this job, and for making a difference as a very young person that you are. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councillor, appreciate it. Councillor Levy.
Thank you, Council President. I have a question. By you working for the city, is not a conflict or interest between the two positions?
It is not. In fact, we, we feel that that's actually an asset. So similar to the DPW Director serving on the, on the commission by virtue of his position, we feel that by virtue of my position, working for the city of Lawrence, I will be serving the city's best interests on that commission.
Thank you.
Again, I'd like to point out, this is not a, an employment opportunity, it is serving on a board. So he will be basically a, a member of the Greater Lawrence Sanitary District if we were to approve it tonight.
Okay, thank you so much.
Councillors, any further questions or comments? Seeing there's none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Next document is 2118. Councillor De La Cruz.
2018, appointment zoning board appears with, with Mr. Wilma Soler. It came with a favorable recommendation to be, motion to be approved.
Second.
Motion has been made and properly seconded, any discussions?
Aye.
Seeing there's none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, that was nice and easy.
It's always good.
Public Safety Committee reports, there's none. Committee of the whole, there's none. Councillors, withdrawals, 37617, can I please get a motion to withdraw?
So move.
Is there a second?
Who are we doing?
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been properly seconded, all those in favor, please say aye. Point of information, Councillor Payano. What, which one did you call for? 37617, withdrawals.
Can we postpone that for the study? I would like to, no?
We have, through you, Mr. Council President, well, we decided to do an ordinance committee, which it was present, was that you're going to talk to your resident, and you're going to put on new items.
Okay, send new item.
Okay. Any further discussion? Seeing there's none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Councillor, can I please get a motion to take document 39417 out of table matters?
So move. Second.
Motion has been made and properly seconded. Document, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Document 39417 is capital asset project manager, proposed ordinance from the Department of Public Works. We have the DPW Director with, before us tonight. Councillors, I just wanted to point out that we do have a motion on the floor to approve the document. Any further discussion?
Discussion.
Councillor Rodriguez.
I would like to, who was the other motion? I would like to-
Amended.
Amend the motion, which was originally presented, to remove the session that established the appointed by the mayor and confirmed by the city council.
Okay, so there's an amendment to the motion, is there a second?
What was the amendment?
Point of parliamentary inquiry.
Councillor La Plant.
Minister Plufas.
One moment.
Councillor La Plant.
Who is the author of the original motion?
The record reflects the author of the original motion on December 19th was Council La Plant, to approve the ordinance that was amended to require that the position be recommended by the mayor and approved by the council, as the main amendment to that document. I believe that Council La Plant Vice President at the time made the motion to compel or to provide for discussion.
It was for discussion purposes for Councillor-
That's my memory of it.
Yeah, Councillor, former City Councillor Modesto Madonado wanted to engage in a discussion, and in, in an effort to allow the opportunity to, to engage in the discussion, who proceeded in making the motion.
So, just so I'm clear, again, parliamentary inquiry, the, the current question that's before us, does it have the language for council approval, or not?
It does.
Okay. And just so I'm clear, the, the council vice president is looking to remove the council's position in this, and amend it by, of course, the mayor appointing, but eliminating the council's approval, is that the, is that the recommend-
Does the, does the amendment, if you-
Would you care to, would you care to offer that as a friendly amendment? Because I will accept it if you do.
That's, that's a friendly amendment.
I accept it.
Okay, so it's been accepted as a friendly amendment? Any further discussion? Seeing there's-
Discussion.
Councillor Payano.
Well, is this discussion for the, oh, it was a friendly amendment, so it's discussion on the, on the things proposed right now?
On the motion, yeah.
Okay. So I, I think I just need, you know, I'm, I'm completely new, and like, I'm trying to figure out which document we're looking at in this form. And I know that several of you probably have already, have had this discussion as, as far as what this position is. I feel like I need to get a better understanding of, of the position and, and the need for it.
Sure.
So I, I would love it if that conversation could be had.
Director Hakkus.
Good evening, Councillors. The document before you is the creation of a new position that does not currently exist in the Department of Public Works or in the city charter. It is a creation of positions called capital assets project manager. As the city council know, the administration has been before you ever since fiscal year 2016, with a capital improvement plan every single year, for their various different infrastructure improvements throughout the city. We have been grateful enough to be able to, you know, have this influx of money to upgrade our infrastructure. However, we have seen a need, that we need a manager to be able to oversee all these capital projects that are coming before the city council for approval and being implemented, the majority of them through the Department of Public Works. This position is intended to be somebody with an experience in engineering, construction, or building, I'm sorry, or facilities management, since the majority of projects that are being approved right now through the council and presented to the council have to do with facility upgrades throughout the city. It is our intention to search for a candidate that possesses a strong background, not only engineering, but project management, budgeting, and scheduling, since the majority of the responsibilities for this particular person will be to make sure that the project delivery, or all the capital projects that are approved by council, are delivered both on time and on budget.
Councillor Payano.
Thank you, Mr. President. So just reading through some of the, the required responsibilities for this project manager, it seems pretty intense, extensive. But I'm, I'm also looking at that, you're saying it's master's degree preferred? Why preferred and not required?
Making the recommendations for, for a preferred master's degree versus a required degree, if we were to make, doing that requirement should really limit the pool of candidates out there that we want to look at, it's a juggling act to try to look at, how, how much educational experience does a position like this require, versus what would be the preferred requirement of this position? Based on the requirements that the department is looking for, the city is looking for, for this particular position, we would obviously have somebody, want to have somebody that has a master's degree. But as long as a person has a bachelor's degree in engineering and a solid background in project management or construction management, it would be sufficient to satisfy the requirements for this position.
Thank you. Okay. Councillor De La Cruz.
Yes, President. I understand that there is some requirement for this position, but I like to see people moving up from jobs, because some people, they don't have the requirements paper, but they have the experience. I'd rather want the person with the experience, because they have been in the system, and they understand, and they know. Then seeing people move up, I think it's, it's a progressive plan, where everybody ha, will have the opportunity. Because sometimes we get people with the papers, but they don't have the experience. Then I'd rather get somebody with the knowledge, somebody who has been in the system and that could be move up instead of getting anybody new to do the job.
I think what, what the director here tried to explain, that this will be an open process. Anyone who qualifies for the position, whether it is internal or external, does have the opportunity to apply for the position. And that's not only for this particular case, but any positions within the city. Uh, I know that there has been individuals promoted within, but every position is usually, you know, open to city employees from within departments and/or other departments. And we have the chief of staff here to, to also attest on that. So I think that there's an opportunity. If anyone within the city, I highly encourage anyone within the city to, to apply for the job if the council were to approve it, uh, you know, uh, tonight. So thank you for bringing that up. It's very important. Counselors, any further discussions?
Could the clerk read the, the, the underlying?
Mr. Clerk, please read the motion.
The motion stands at this time as presented by Counsel La Plant duly seconded to approve the measure as originally presented and authored by the city attorney that would affect the provisions regarding the position to be, a non-union position to be appointed by the mayor who shall report directly to the Director of Public Works. There is a second provision on, in section B where the qualification was amended by voter council to require the applicant to be a civil engineer as opposed to an engineer. That is reverted back to engineer.
Um, okay. Keep civil engineer. I'm not sure, I'm gonna look through Mr. Hakkis, if you have any strong opinions on that through you.
Yeah, I have your comment. Counsel President.
I have a question to Mr., Mr. Hakkis.
Mr. Hakkis, you, you answer that and then Counselor Rodriguez.
So on the section A, oh, sorry. Go ahead.
Thank you, Counselor. Uh, yes, due to the fact that the majority of the projects that are being approved right now by council have to do with, in some capacity, the civil engineering field, I would not be opposed of this particular candidate will be required to have a civil engineering degree.
You're okay with the civil engineering requirement?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Rodriguez?
Sure. Just give me one second, please. You can, you can keep on the... Okay, I have a question for you before I, before I look into something here. How is gonna be the process to hire, to hire this person?
I'm sorry, Counselor?
How is gonna be the process to hire this person?
Um, it is my understanding that is in the intention of the mayor to establish a search committee, uh, for this position.
So I have a couple of questions here. So on the original amendment, we don't have the qualifications.
So the amendment, to my understanding, and I, I'd like to get a clarification from the clerk, the amendment made by Counselor Rodriguez was to approve the ordinance as presented with a friendly amendment removing to be approved by the city council.
That's, that's it. Because on the second one, it's, it's, the qualification was civil engineering, all the stuff.
Yeah, the qualification still remain in that motion.
No.
No?
Not from my understanding. The council vice president stated that he wanted to present an amendment to as-is. As-is...
Doesn't have the qualifications.
Does not, well, it does have qualifications, but the qualification is as, for engineering. The amended qualification voted by council was to be a civil engineer. That'd be up to the council, I mean, the council vice president, it's his motion to amend, uh, as to whether, which version he wants to present.
My intention is to remove the city council approval, but keeping the civil engineering requirements.
Okay.
So we agree with that.
That's, that's clear.
No problem.
Okay. So that's, that's the intention. Counselor La Plant, accept this friendly amendment?
Yeah, that's how, that's how I understand it and that's how I, that's how I accept the friendly amendment.
Okay. So if there's no further discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Congratulations.
Thank you, Counselor.
Thank you.
Okay, Counselors, there's, um, can I please get a motion to take document, document...
240. 240?
24017 out of table. Thank you, Counselor Rodriguez.
So moved. So moved.
Motion has been made. Is there a second? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Present. Document 24017 is parking Canal Street. Mr. Clerk, roll call, please. Document 24017 parking Canal Street from Union Street to Mill Street, placed on the agenda by Joel Herrera.
Document 24017, Counsel Reyes.
Yes.
This is to remove from table, right?
To remove from table.
Thank you. Counsel Levy?
Yes.
Counsel La Plant?
Yes.
Counsel Abdou?
Present.
Nodded. Counsel Payano?
Yes.
Counsel De La Cruz?
Yes.
Counsel De Peña?
Yes.
Counsel Vice President Rodriguez?
Yes.
And Counsel President?
Yes. Motion carries. Document 24017 is parking at Canal Street from Union Street to Mill Street, Joel Herrera. We had a public hearing on this document and there's currently a motion...
To approve.
To approve pending. Um, Counselors, are there any discussion here?
No. Motion to approve?
So a discussion.
So the motion can carries.
Discussion.
Um, discussion, we have Counselor Payano.
Um, Counsel President, can you give me an understanding of, um, what we're proposing here and who is it coming from?
Uh, this is a request by Joel Herrera, who is the owner of Atika Lounge, I believe it's called. And the request is to allow for parking along the street on Canal Street between the...
From Mill?
From Mill, from Union, Union to Mill.
One person at a time, Counselors. Uh, from Union Street to Mill Street. Currently, parking is not allowed on either side of the street. And the petitioner has had difficulties in terms of his patrons having parking opportunities in the area. And there was a request to table by former Counsel Madonado to...
Contact Homeland Security.
To contact Homeland Security.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Counselors, any further questions?
Discussion.
Counselor Madonado, uh, Counselor La Plant?
He was the, he made the motion. Well, that's a good question. Who, who is the author of the underlying motion?
The author of the underlying motion is Counsel, um, Alvarez Rodriguez.
Oh, Alvarez Rodriguez. Okay.
And seconded by Counsel Abdou.
So my question is, is, do we ever get a police? I'm looking through the background, I see the stuff, the letters to the Homeland Security. Do we ever get a response from Homeland Security?
Mr. Clerk?
I, I contacted Homeland Security on three occasions. I sent two emails in various states. I think they're both in the file. Uh, I did not get a response by email. I then made a phone call and left a message on the voicemail of the Homeland Security officer. Uh, I don't have his name right now. I thought it was in the file, but in any event, it's on my desk.
If it's okay with the Counsel President?
And nothing, nothing ever came back.
Nothing, right? If it's okay with the Counsel President, could I ask the chief of staff to provide some insight?
Good evening, Chief of Staff.
Thank you again, Council President. Um, the only thing I do know is we've had a lot of issues with parking on Mill Street and Canal Street at the federal building. There is a, not, a federal naturalization and immigration center on that building. They have very strict federal guidelines for their parking. So I just, especially the block that that federal building is on, because there used to be different parking requirements prior to the building being erected there, um, when it was a restaurant, there was parking on Mill Street. Now, due to those federal regulations, there's no parking on Mill Street and no parking on Canal. So I just, I don't know about the rest of the area that your body is looking at, but I do know that that specific block where Mill and Canal meet with the federal building, I'd be very hesitant to approve parking in light of the federal guidelines.
Please, Counsel President.
Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Counsel La Plant has the floor.
Sure. So I just, yeah, so with that, I, I, I'm cautious. I mean, I, we don't, I, I understand there's a need. I get it. I, I understand. Talked about parking a few minutes ago, right? About how this crazy parking needed, all these cars, another example of this, and we need more parking. But I just don't want to put us in a position where we're, we're, we're having to rescind something or having to go against that. And it's unfortunate the clerks make the effort to try to get a response and we're not getting a response. I'm willing to listen to see if there's any other opportunities for us to, maybe this is a perfect opportunity for our federal representatives to get involved. Homeland Security is a federal, it's, it's a federal position. Uh, maybe we could have Congresswoman Songes get more information on our behalf. That's what would make sense to me. If we're not getting a phone call returned from the clerk, then we need to ask the legislative body who oversees that, which is either Markey's, Warren, or Songes to help us out. So, um, I'll let the debate continue. I'd like to make a motion at one point, though, to ask, send a letter to Representative Songes to, to, um, give us information as to whether or not we are allowed to go ahead and put parking restrictions in the perimeter.
Please, Counsel President.
Counsel Rodriguez?
All right, I just wanted to point this out. Uh, the, the federal building is located between Methuen Street and Mill Street. On Methuen Street, on the, on the, on the sides of the building, there is a specific parkings that are allowed currently. On the, on the, on the other street, which is, um, Canal Street, there is no parking allowed. So basically, what they are asking is to have the same requirements that Methuen Streets have, with the difference that they're not gonna be parking right next to the building, which is basically the opposite of the parking that is already allowed on Methuen Street. So there is, this is something that is, that, that we can take, we can take, uh, a stand on it, say yes or no, and allow those people to, to do what they need to do. Plus, as a, this city council, if we approve an ordinance today, we have 30 days from this day today to do something about it, because it's not gonna be an effect right away. I just want to be clear. Same, that what they're asking is the same regulations that we have on Methuen Street, with the difference that Methuen Street is, or the parking on Methuen Streets is right next to the building and they have no issues whatsoever with those parking. Because the parking requirements are between 7:00 PM at night to 3:00 AM in the morning.
Yep.
Those are the, what they're asking. Time that the people go up there and, and, and have dinner and stuff like that. It's not, it, throughout the whole day, uh, some type of parking. It's in a specific hours from 7:00 to 3:00 AM in the morning and, and it's the same requirement that is on Methuen Street. And that's a point that we didn't consider before. We didn't discuss it, but it's a reality. If we have so much concern with the building, and I understand that it's on, some regulations, federal regulations, but why we're not facing those, those, those kind of like, you know...
Counsel, can I please get a motion to go past 10?
So moved.
Second.
Motion has been made and properly second. Any discussion? Seeing there's none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it.
So, depending on the discussion, it's just the same regulation with the difference that people that are gonna be parking now are not gonna be so close to the building like it is currently on Methuen Street. On Methuen Street, people park right next to the building and there is no kind of like, you know, so, any type of issues unless that we, unless that we, we, at least we don't have that information. Tom Bodin, yes on this?
Okay. Any further discussion?
Just, just a comment.
Counsel Reyes, De La Cruz, and Levy.
And, um, just second what Counsel Rodriguez was saying, it's gonna be after hours, it's not gonna be what the building is operating. And we had been discussing this back and forth, waiting for an answer. As the city clerk has mentioned it, he has emailed twice, no response. I mean, we're here to take an action, to make things move forward. It's not that we are taking ownership and do something just because we want to do it. So I am going to support this motion and as he said, if something needs to be done, we're still gonna have it windows of 30 days, which we can do something different.
Counselor De La Cruz?
Uh, yes. The whole area is very uncomfortable. I go to the immigration departments a lot and it's no parking. And when you park on Newberry Street, uh, there's the lady giving you tickets at 9:00 in the morning. Then, uh, if the immigration department has a request, a space for them, because I don't see it.
So then he could...
Then, I think that is, if it is after hours, after the office is closed, I think, um, it is safe to them. And I believe they have cameras everywhere, then it is more safe for anybody who parks around there. Then I will, I will, um, um, vote for this to go, to go on.
Counselor Levy?
Uh, the other area that the parking is allowed, have the same restriction with the hours that we are asking for to, is the same, so everything is gonna be the same?
Everything is gonna be the same.
Okay.
7:00, 7:00 PM to 3:00 AM in the morning.
So let me, let me, uh, the, the city clerk has some, some information that could be provided to us. It's information that, based on the research I had, I had done, it's not the same information he has.
The only thing I can inform the council on this issue is I've researched it thoroughly, initially probably for about a year now with Counsel Reyes. Certainly, uh, we were taking up, I think the ordinance committee was taking up provisions regarding the Methuen Street side of where the courthouse is placed. The matter went up to the state delegation at the time and magically appeared signs to allow parking, or, I'm sorry, prohibit parking from 7:00, uh, from 3:00 AM to 7:00 PM on the, on the Methuen Street courthouse side, which is actually the south side of Methuen Street. There is no ordinance to support that provision. That's the current state of the ordinances. The application came in to post or place similar ordinances on the other side and that matter is now before the council. Prior ordinances making it prohibiting parking, that signs that you see now have been allowed, deleting that, making way for a posting of an hour ordinance that allows for parking near the courthouse side, parking not being allowed on the Canal Street side because it's a waterway. But on the courthouse side, it'd be prohibited from 3:00 AM to 7:00 PM, which would then allow essentially parking, restricted parking between 7:00 PM and 3:00 AM. So by allowing this motion, you'd be allowing parking on that side. My sense is that once those signs go up and that's properly ordinances, I might get a return call.
All right, then we deal with it. We deal with it. Right?
Exactly.
Okay. So Counselors, Counsel Abdou, I apologize.
No worries, Mr. President. What is the position of Lawrence Police Department on this?
Do we know?
Uh, yes, I think it's...
I sent a letter or an email, I think it's in your packet, asking on, uh, November 20th, uh, for a police report. And I'm trying to remember the gist of that.
Got the same response I got.
That's what he said in the report, that we have to reach to the state.
Thank you.
And you emailed twice. That was basically his report.
Mm-hmm. His report, yeah.
Like he's not gonna put his hand because this is, um, state level.
Federal.
And, uh, and federal.
Federal.
Federal, I'm, I'm sorry. And, um, that was basically his report.
That's correct.
Good. So I, I'd like to make a motion, Counsel President, that we send a letter to Congresswoman Songes asking for assistance in this matter to get us information as to whether or not we can lawfully do that and at least have the Department of Homeland Security engage we can lawfully do that, and at least have the Department of Homeland Security engage in a conversation, which she can help become a medi, intermediary, to, so that the council can get more information. We usually rely on the police department. Police department says, no, we got to rely on the federal authorities, so even the police department is making the same ask. So, that's my, that's my motion, I'd like to make that.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor, is a second. Motion has been properly seconded. Any discussion? Seeing there's none, all those in favor, please say aye.
No.
Mr. Clerk, roll, roll call, please.
Nope.
Council De Peña?
No.
Council De La Cruz?
No.
Council Payano?
No.
Council Abdou?
Yes.
Council LaPlante?
Yes.
Council Levy?
No.
Council Reyes?
No.
Council President?
No.
Motion fails. Two yes, seven no.
So, the, the original motion is to approve.
To approve.
Any further discussion? Seeing there's none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Yes.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Mr. Clerk, roll call, please.
Council Reyes?
Yes.
Council Levy?
Yes.
Council LaPlante?
No.
Council Abdou?
No.
Council Payano?
Yes.
Council De La Cruz?
Yes.
Council De Peña?
Yes.
Council Vice President Rodriguez?
Yes.
Council President?
Yes. The motion carries?
Carries, seven two.
Councilors, are there any other documents that you wish to take off the table at this moment? Document, document twenty-six eighteen is Lawrence Public Schools K eight enrollment projections and plans to address capacity issues. It's going... Councilor Payano, what's your intention with this document?
There was a discussion in our housing committee regarding sort of how, how the, the schools play a role in sort of like some of the decisions that we're making, and there was a lot of questions around, you know, the, the capacity of...
This housing focus.
I'm sorry?
It's, the discussion will be housing focus?
The, the housing, yes.
Okay, so it's going down to the housing committee. Document, thank you, Councilor Payano. Document twenty-seven eighteen, Ministerio Poder de Dios Sin Limite, requests the use of the campagne en commun for a Cruzada en Vangelística de Milagros on August tenth and August eleventh, two thousand and eighteen, from one to ten PM. It's going down to the ordinance committee. Document twenty-eight eighteen, Handicap Parking, twenty-one Beacon Street, is going down to the ordinance committee. Document twenty-nine seventeen, Semana Hispana Lawrence, requests the use of the campagne en commun for a spring festival, Semana Hispana, from April thirtieth to May sixth, two thousand and eighteen, from six to eleven PM, going to the ordinance committee. Document thirty-eighteen, Semana Hispana Lawrence, requests the use of the campagne en commun for a cultural festival on June fifteenth, seventeen, June six, fifteenth, sixteenth, and seventeenth, from six to eleven PM on Friday, and noon to eleven PM on the weekend. It's going down to the ordinance committee. Document thirty-one eighteen, Removal of Deed Restriction, Book forty-five seventy-nine, page eighty-eight, from the city of Lawrence to Catherine O'Connor, is going down to the housing committee. Document thirty-two eighteen, Lawrence Police Department, fiscal year two thousand and eighteen, State nine eleven Department Training Grant, is going down to the Budget and Finance Committee. Document thirty-three eighteen, Lawrence Police Department, two thousand and eighteen Massachusetts Municipal Public Safety Staffing Grant, is going to the Budget and Finance Committee. Document thirty-four eighteen, Police Department, two thousand and eighteen Shannon Community Safety Initiative Grant, is going to the Budget and Finance Committee. Document thirty-five seventeen, Lawrence Police Department, two thousand and seventeen Bullet Proof Vest Partnership Grant, with the federal amount of five thousand three hundred and eighty-six, and a state amount of five thousand three hundred and eighty-six, is going to the Budget and Finance Committee. Document thirty-six eighteen, Handicap Parking, Ordinance Committee. Document thirty-seven eighteen, Olive in July, requests the use of the campagne en commun for our anniversary celebration on July eighth, is going to the Ordinance Committee. Document thirty-eight eighteen, Crime Topics for Review, is going to the Public Safety Committee. Document forty eighteen, Surplus Declaration, twenty-three Doyle Street, going to the Housing Committee. Forty-one eighteen, Surplus Declaration, twelve Ackton Street, Housing Committee. Document forty-two eighteen, Surplus Declaration, seven Shawell Court, is going to the Housing Committee. Document forty-three eighteen, Surplus Declaration, Millville Avenue, Housing Committee. Document forty-four eighteen, Surplus Declaration, six seventeen, Common Street, going to the Housing Committee. Document forty-five eighteen, Surplus Declaration, two seventy-seven, Haverhill Street, going to the Housing Committee. Document forty-six eighteen, Surplus Declaration, fifteen Boxford Street, Unit One, going to the Housing Committee. Forty-seven seventeen, Surplus Declaration, three eighteen Lowell Street, going to the Housing Committee. Document forty-eight eighteen, Surplus Declaration, three twenty Lowell Street, Housing Committee. Document forty-nine eighteen, Surplus Declaration, twenty-five twenty-seven, Spruce Street, Housing Committee. Fifty eighteen, Office of Planning and Development, Mas Works Grant Authorization for Merrimack Street West, the amount of three million dollars is going down to the Budget and Finance Committee. Document fifty-one eighteen, Office of Planning and Development, Green Communities Designation Grant, on the amount of five hundred ninety-four thousand one hundred and forty dollars is going to Budget and Finance Committee. Document fifty-two eighteen, Lawrence Fire Department, School-Based Safe and Senior Safe Grants, on the amount of nine thousand seven hundred and eighteen dollars, Budget and Finance Committee. Fifty-three eighteen, Lawrence Fire Department, Emergency Performance Grant, Budget and Finance Committee. Document fifty-four eighteen, Saint Patrick's Day Parade Approval, is going to the Ordinance Committee. Document fifty-five eighteen, Appointment, Cultural Counsel Kathleen De Filippo, is going to the Personnel Committee. Document fifty-six eighteen, Appointment, Oliver School Building Committee, Stephanie Infante, is going to the Personnel Committee. Document fifty-seven eighteen, Transfer Vandal License, two railroads tree, going to the Ordinance Committee. Document fifty-eight eighteen, Proceeds from the Royal New Schools Repair, to the Budget and Finance Committee. Document fifty-nine eighteen, Recovery of Significant City Assets, is going to the Ordinance Committee. Document sixty eighteen, Pickup and Drop Off Zone, sixty-two Park Street, going to the Ordinance Committee. Mr. Chair from the Budget and Finance Committee?
Seven o'clock, February thirteenth.
Can you repeat that again, please?
Seven o'clock, February thirteenth.
Madam Chair from the Ordinance Committee?
I think I'm going to leave it open, because next Thursday is going to be the presentation of the CDVG, and I, I'm one of the members, so I'm going to reschedule the meeting for the following Thursday, since we don't have many items this week.
Okay. So, that will be Thursday, the twenty-second?
Yes.
Okay. Will you, will you want to do Thursday, March first? Instead, that way...
Yeah, that, that makes more sense, yep.
You will be able to get documents from the twentieth.
Yeah, okay.
So, it will be ordinance on Wednesday?
Thursday.
March, Thursday, March first, at seven PM, okay? Personnel? Personnel's on Mondays or Tuesdays?
Mondays at seven.
Monday, Monday the twelfth, at seven PM?
Public safety on that meeting.
Tuesday.
And housing?
We'll say on housing, Thursday the fifteenth, because the other days are very busy. Monday is two, two meetings already.
No, Monday's one meeting.
Well, safety, we have a safety meeting.
Okay, so, housing has regularly, I, I would recommend that we don't make drastic changes to the schedule if not necessary. So, let's try, because that way, I, I usually plan myself ahead of time for, you know, months. I have a busy schedule, just like all of you do. So, I will encourage that we stick to, you know, housing on Tuesdays.
Yeah, but I mean, on, on these days, we have two meetings already on the twelfth.
On the thirteenth, there's no meeting. That's when housing usually meets, on Tuesdays.
Yes, we do have a meeting. We, they have, they have Budget and Finance.
Budget and Finance. Why is Budget and Finance on, on the thirteenth? It's usually on Wednesdays.
All right.
So, housing on the thirteenth?
Housing the thirteenth.
At seven PM.
So, Council President?
Yes.
Okay. So, it looks like we have a Budget and Finance Committee meeting on the thirteenth.
But it looks like we're going to move it to the fourteenth now.
So, we're moving it to the fourteenth.
Don't blame your sweetheart that, you know, we're doing it on the fourteenth.
So, the, the Budget and Finance regularly meets on Wednesdays. That's a regular schedule.
And housing on Tuesdays?
Wednesday. Housing on Tuesday.
Sacrifices of me, Council Fravana. Can I say? Count time's there. Yeah, that's...
So, housing on the thirteenth?
Housing on the thirteenth.
Okay, housing on the thirteenth.
Personnel on the twelfth. Councilor De La Cruz?
Yes. I would like to say that people are expecting the councilor to go to the neighborhood meetings. Most of the neighborhood meetings, some of the neighborhood meetings that we have in this city, tends to be on that second, Tuesday of the month, that second Monday of the month, or Mondays. My meetings are the last Monday of the month. I go to another neighborhood meetings that is another Monday, second Monday of the week, second Monday of the month. Then, people are expecting us to visit those neighborhood meetings as much as possible. Then, we have to try as much as we can to visit the Neighborhood Association around your community.
Thank you, Councilor De La Cruz. Council Payano?
So, can we just get a rundown of when all the meetings are? So, on the twelfth, there's a Public Safety Committee at seven PM.
Personnel? Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
Housing on the thirteenth?
Monday, sorry. If you, so after that, what are the other committees?
So, I will do a rundown right now. Public Safety, February twelfth. Budget and Finance, February fourteenth. Housing, February thirteenth. Personnel, February twelfth. Ordinance, March first.
Then, February twelfth, you had two?
Yes.
So, to my, to my, my budget chair, why can't we move from the fourteenth to the fifteenth?
Because you want me to attend that meeting, or you'll want it on the fourteenth, because I'm not going to be able to make it on the fifteenth.
Then we change it to the following week?
Mr. Payano has to change his plan.
If you guys want to see me alive, let's figure out how to...
It seems like you have to make arrangements to change your plan. But give it a try, give it a try. I know that you're going to be, you're about to.
I'll write your note.
It's already paid?
A lot of love.
It's already paid?
So, councilors, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. The committees that have not made a determination on the share, I will be attending those meetings again, okay?